Hi, everyone. I think all the commissioners here.
I don't see Gail or Stephanie.
Okay, how do you bring that list to the edge of the screen?
If you go down and you can click participants.
Yeah, okay. There we go. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see Gail. So we're just waiting on Stephanie.
I see we have somebody calling in on your phone. Just a reminder to unmute yourself. It is a star six. To raise your hand if you do a star nine, that will show on our screen as a raised hand. If that doesn't work, please let us know. And we'll make sure that you have time to give your public comment.
Thank you, Margie. Okay, I see all the commissioners here. So I want to welcome everyone to the planning commission meeting of July 14th by Carmel by the Sea. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dells.
Eric.
Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Lehman, you're not muted. You can just say yes. We can't hear.
I don't think she can hear you.
I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Locke.
She's asleep in her vest.
Yeah.
Did she get disconnected?
I think so.
She may have been having a little trouble getting on, yeah. She was here. Okay, let's just give her a moment. There she is. Okay, she's unmuted. Margie, why don't you call her name?
I apologize for my lateness.
Margie, want to continue with the roll call?
And Chair Lepage.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. All the commissioners are here. All right. First item on our agenda tonight is the public appearances. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern which are not on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the planning commission about any matters which are not on our agenda tonight? I don't see any hands going up. Anybody see any hands? Okay.
No hands.
Doesn't look like there's anyone from the public who wants to address us. Marnie, would you like to make that special announcement?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So on Monday, July 19th, which is coming up here in a couple of days, there will be a special meeting of the planning commission, which will be held jointly with the regular meeting of the Historic Resources Board. And this joint meeting is to hear the Verizon Wireless project that is proposed for the rooftop of Sunset Center. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Marnie. All right, so the next item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be pulled for further discussion. If not, the one motion may be made to accept all the items. So we have three items, excuse me, four items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the planning commission meetings from our June 9th meeting. We have the community planning building report from June this year. We have a consideration of a new bench and plaque donation along the scenic walking path in honor of former Mayor Sue McLeod. And we have a design study, Minelli, it's 19441, which is consideration of a one-year time extension for a track one major referral design study and associated coastal development permit. Do any members of the commission or the public want any of these items pulled for further discussions, questions, or corrections? Commissioner Locke, I see your hands up. You want to pull?
Yes, I'd like to pull item three, please.
Item three is the
Bench.
The bench, yes, the bench. Okay, we'll pull item three. Do any members of the commission or the public want any other items pulled for questions or discussion? Okay, so what we'll do is the chair will request a motion to accept item on the consent agenda number one, two, and four. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motions are made to accept items on the consent agenda number one, two, and four. No further discussion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Commissioner Dells.
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman.
Yes.
Commissioner Locke.
Yes.
Chair Lepage.
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, this time we will discuss BD 21-158, the plaque and bench donation. So did you have a question or did you want to have some questions to staff, Commissioner Locke? Or do you want to do a staff report on this? How do you want to proceed?
That's a good question. I don't think we necessarily need a staff report. I know all of the commissioners were at the site visit today. And I think there was some concern about the safety of the location that was chosen for this bench. And I would actually like to see this item continued so that perhaps we can have staff evaluate what other areas could potentially be bench locations that would not have the drop off that this location has in front of it. And so I would recommend that we continue this item.
Okay, let me, before we get the other commissioners' input, staff, did you have any input on this?
So I do have a few slides I'd be happy to put up on the screen that show both the location and the style of bench if the commission would like to see those. What I guess what I would add is that back in 2019, the planning commission approved eight new locations for benches along scenic and all eight of those benches have been donated and dedicated at this point. So, you know, scenic is a very popular location. We continue to get many requests. This particular location was identified by the applicant as their preferred location due to the view that it provides. Staff certainly would be happy to work with the applicant to see if there might be another location more suitable. Although we do have some concerns at this point that we might be running out of locations along scenic.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. If any other commissioners have some comments, Commissioner Dells, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I don't have any objection to to another bench or more benches, nor to a bench honoring anybody. But I think, well, I'll just speak for myself, that location, there really is, there's, if you look at other locations of benches, they have quite a bit more safety. Yeah, there's either a fence or a wall or far there, they're far enough from the drop off, you know, or they're surrounded by flat earth that, you know, is less likely to, as somebody said, have a stroller go over. And this location, just it doesn't seem safe. I think the stroller comment that somebody made is a great one. And that I think it would just be helpful for staff to kind of go take a look and come back to us with suggestions on locations, you know, come up with some criteria. This doesn't have to be rocket science, but I would make safety the primary one and define safety. And because I, again, I don't think we have an overcrowding of benches and I think we could place more, but let's just do it thoughtfully.
Okay, do any other commissioners have some comments about this? Commissioner Lehman?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with everyone who has spoken that I feel like there is a definitive safety issue there. And we need to explore other sites. So I would like to see a plan of exactly how many, perhaps when this comes back, where we have the benches from start to finish. From, I think they started Ocean, starting from Ocean Avenue and going south. I don't think we have any north and of Ocean Avenue and how far we go and how many we have. And I mean, we don't want this to look like an auditorium when we're finished. So you know, let's, let's give an overall look at it now. As Marnie said, they're getting a lot of requests for benches. And maybe we have to figure out some other way that people can honor loved ones with plaques. So, thanks.
Commissioner Bolton, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to see perhaps a survey like Gail suggesting of the existing benches and proposals for new locations. I don't think we are out of room yet, but we will run out of room at some point. So I think it'd be useful to have identified sites for our future use, especially if we have a number of people requesting. That's about it. I also think this one's a bit of a concern, safety is not perfect in this location. So I'd rather see, you know, more comprehensive plan than have these come to us piecemeal one at a time. Thanks.
Okay, it sounds like the commission is not in favor of this particular location because of a safety issue, which I understand it's, it's pretty close to, there's a pretty narrow area there and it's pretty close to a steep drop off on the bluff and the fence doesn't go past there. So there's no protective barrier. And I think increasing activity in that area could increase the possibility of somebody going down the bluff. So we could do a couple of things. We could just deny this, or we could give continue with direction to staff to work with the applicant to find a better place with a caveat that would be brought back to the commission, or we could just leave it up to staff to determine that based upon the direction that the commission is giving right now. So with that broad guidelines, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we continue this until we can see a survey and well, it's a two-part motion, really, one that we need to see a survey of all the existing benches and proposed sites and to find a safer site for this particular bench.
Good. Do we have a second on that?
My second.
Okay, Commissioner Locke's second. Okay, we have a motion to continue this item with staff to bring back a survey of the existing bench sites. It's my understanding that those have all been filled, the ones that were previously approved. And with a recommendation for a safer site. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Commissioner Dells.
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman.
Yes.
Commissioner Locke.
Yes.
Chair Lepage.
Yes. Okay, the motion is carried. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda on our agenda tonight. Next item of business is the public hearings. The first item on the public hearing number five has been continued to a future date. So the first item we are considering tonight is item number six, a design study, it's DS 20-376. That's the Shatz project. It's consideration of a combined concept and final design study and associated coastal development permit for a six, excuse me, a 96 square foot addition to the front of an existing single-family residence and the construction of a new 260 square foot attached garage. 166 square foot net addition for the site. Additionally, there's additional site improvements, including the reconstruction and reconfiguration of a deck at the front of the residence over the garage, new driveway, new walkways, new landings, and landscape improvements. Can we have staff report, please?
Well, thank you, Chair Lepage. First, can I just confirm that everyone can see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we can see it. I can see it.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm going to be presenting this project tonight on behalf of Evan Court, who's been working very diligently with the applicant to get this before you. And so this is a combined concept and final design study for the Shatz residence. So the property is a standard 4,000 square foot site. The existing home is about 1,500 square feet. And it includes 190 square foot garage, which is just slightly smaller than what is required for parking. The applicant is proposing to demolish this garage and construct a new 260 square foot garage to provide better parking for the residents. Additional project components include new exterior finishes on the building, landscaping changes, and site coverage changes. With respect to forest character, there are no trees currently on site. There are two cypress and one oak. The cypress are located in the right-of-way at the front of the property. The oak is located on a neighboring property. The city forester is requiring one upper and one lower canopy tree be planted as part of the project. And this has been made condition of approval number 28. With respect to privacy and views, staff has not identified any impacts. The project does include a small addition at the front of the residence. It will maintain the existing ridge line, so it won't be any taller than the existing house. New windows are proposed throughout the house, but generally are the same size and location as existing conditions. The front deck will be expanded and slightly relocated, but staff did not identify any new privacy impacts as a result of the changes. With respect to mass and bulk, the ridge and plate heights are proposed to match the existing conditions. They will be slightly taller due to the topography of the site sloping from east to west, but still within the guidelines. The garage will be constructed partially into the slope to decrease the mass of the garage. And this is consistent with the residential design guidelines. So again, at the front of the building, the applicant is proposing a simple addition to the roof and the building form. The existing roof pitch is six and 12, and that will be carried out through the addition. There is a flat roof element towards the rear of the property, and that will be finished with tar and gravel, whereas the primary roof form will be finished with composition shingle. So with respect to finished details, the applicant is proposing a presidential composition shingle roof. The residents would be clad with vertical cedar siding with horizontal cedar siding used for walls and fences. A limited amount of stucco would also be incorporated into the finished materials. It does add diversity within the neighborhood and in staff's opinion is consistent with the design guidelines. The applicant is also proposing to replace the windows with aluminum clad windows and be using a granite material for the stairs and patios as well as pavers for the new driveway. The one item that staff did identify as a potential issue are the installation of two new skylights. These would be on the north ridge or the north sloping portion of the roof and may be visible from the right-of-way and neighboring properties. This would be in conflict with the design guidelines, which encourage skylights to not be visually prominent from the street or from neighboring properties. Staff has included special condition number 29, that the skylights be removed. If the commission finds that the skylights are not visually prominent, you could certainly strike this condition from the resolution. With respect to site coverage and landscaping, the existing conditions contain just over 1,300 square feet of site coverage. The applicant is proposing to reduce site coverage down to 406 square feet. New site coverage elements include the new driveway, stone steps and landings, and the front patio and deck. The city forester has reviewed the proposed landscape plan and has approved it conceptually. And with respect to lighting, a couple of different light fixtures have been proposed. Staff has reviewed all of these for consistency with our lighting requirements and design guidelines and finds them all to be shielded and down-facing and within the appropriate lumen levels. So staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt a resolution approving the combined concept and final design study. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Any questions?
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Staff from the commissioners?
Yeah, Marnie, yeah, Marnie. I, I, oh, I'm getting an echo. I'm getting an echo.
Yeah, I noticed that, too. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, Marnie, I would like staff to take another look at that exterior light because I noticed when I saw the speck on it that it's open at the top and the bottom, so it's not shielded.
Certainly, and we can ask the applicant, the architect Samuel Pitnick should be on the line with us. We have seen this fixture before, and sometimes there are options for uplighting, downlighting, or just one or the other. I'd certainly be happy to ask him to clarify that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff from the commissioners? I don't see any hands up.
No.
Okay, thank you, Marnie. All right, would the architect or the applicant like to address the planning commission regarding this application? I see Sam.
Yeah, can everyone hear me all right?
We can, Sam.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Lepage and commissioners. Yeah, I'm the architect for Lisa and Stephen Shatz. Marnie, thank you for that presentation. So my clients Lisa and Stephen have been longtime residents of Carmel and have lived on this block of San Antonio Avenue for a number of years. They purchased this property last year with the intention of remodeling the home to make it more livable for themselves as well as their visiting children and actually as of today, they're visiting grandchildren. Their daughter-in-law is having a baby today. The existing house is a bit of an amalgamation with a mix of wood shingle siding, horizontal siding, and board and bat siding. There's also a glass sunroom that was added on to the front as well as a large wood deck along the front of the property, front of the house that needs repairs. There's also termite damage evident throughout the exterior siding and roof eaves. So in order to address these issues and improve the overall aesthetics of the home, the goals of the remodel became first to replace the exterior siding and achieve a more consistent appearance. We're proposing to clad the exterior and vertical cedar siding along the front of the house, and then along the far sides and rear of the house will transition to a cream colored stucco siding. The stucco siding will also be along the face of the garage as well. We will also cut back the roofies to remove the termite damage, which will also give the home a more clean, a little bit more contemporary appearance. We are proposing to remove the existing wood deck and one car garage in front and replace it kind of in kind. When we were on site today, I pointed out that currently the garage is kind of set to the side around the cypress tree, so it creates a kind of an awkward angle when you try and drive onto it. So the intention is to shift the garage over so that you can have a straight approach in, thus making it much safer to use. Lastly, we're proposing to remove the glass sunroom at the front of the house and extend the home towards the street by seven feet, ten inches, which is as far as the sunroom currently sits now. In order to take advantage of the views towards the ocean, we are proposing floor-to-ceiling glass along the San Antonio elevation. This glass will however be outfitted with shades on the inside, so we can kind of control privacy at night. The proposed addition in front plus the new garage will bring the total square footage up to the maximum allowed, eighteen hundred square feet. As we know in Carmel, and especially as we get closer to the ocean, views become an important issue. So early on into the project, I did meet with the surrounding neighbors to the north-south and those homes along the east as well to see what potential, you know, impacts could happen to their view. So by limiting the extent of the front addition and also not increasing the height, but instead just extending out from the existing ridge line, we don't believe that any of the proposed addition will impact any of the neighboring views. In addition to the work on the house, we are proposing to make several improvements to the site. As Marnie mentioned, we will replace a portion of the existing front garden wall that's currently failing. We will also remove the wood steps up to the front door, which are also damaged, and will replace those with stone steps, which will be kind of tucked around the side and a little less visible from the street. We are also significantly reducing the site coverage in order to promote permeability. Simon Phillips is our landscape designer. We think he's done a great job of proposing a nice yet modest landscape plan, which includes a mix of agave and native grasses, as well as some lower growing plants that also kind of help screen the the wood site walls as well as some of the stucco by the garage. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Do the commissioners have any questions for the architect?
No, I don't.
I've got one real quick.
Mr. Bolton.
Sam, is the wall in the front the same height as the current wall? In the left-hand wall existing and there's a new wall with horizontal siding. I'm just wondering if it's the same overall height from the grade.
To answer a question, it's actually, I believe, one foot taller than the existing grade. I believe we're allowed up to four feet maximum for that fence in front, so we're going to go up to that four-foot height limit.
Okay, cool. I just couldn't tell first aid from my drawings or from your drawings.
Okay, do any of the other commissioners have a question for Sam? I don't see any. Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application at this time? I don't see any hands going up. Okay, it doesn't look like anybody else wants to address the planning commission, so I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Mr. Lehman, would you like to begin?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sam, I think it's a it's a great change to this house. I I feel like you've done a really nice job with it. You know, I like the siding. I like the combination of materials. I like the way you did the staircase. Definitely the garage needed to get a little bit larger, so if you park your car inside, you can open the door and get out. And I I'm not objecting to the skylights. I think the topography of the site, it's so high off the street that I think it will be really difficult to see those skylights. I feel like it's kind of shielded by the adjacent house to the north, so I I'm not concerned about it. And that's about all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Locke, but do you have any comments?
I echo Commissioner Lehman's comments. I think it's a beautiful design and a big improvement, and I'm happy to see that we're doing a remodel, so I'm fine.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton.
Yeah, sure. I don't have any objection to this house, and I don't really have an objection to the skylights. I assume they'll be shaded like they all have to be. And since the neighbor to the north who might suffer an impact from the skylights, I said nothing. I don't have a real, I don't see a real impact on the street. It's very kind of just a tiny view. So I would allow the skylights probably to be in. Otherwise, I think it's a fine project. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dells.
I echo all the previous comments, specifically on the skylights. You know, the the design guidelines suggest that, you know, we don't like them when they're a visit prominently visible from the public way. While they are visible, they're not prominently visible at all. And I'd even further point out that I think the, you know, the night sky light, if you will, or light going up into the night sky from that sunroom today is significantly more than would be going up through a couple of skylights, so I'm I'm prepared to support a motion that includes the skylights.
Okay, I think everybody's made their comments. Yeah, I I I'm in agreement that I don't think the location of the skylights is significant, plus the condition that they have to have shades would mitigate any night sky pollution. And I do want to compliment Sam. This is a really, really nice design. And I I think he's done a really great job with this 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 house. Big improvement. So Commissioner Dell, sounds like you wanted to make a motion there.
Mike, Michael.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lehman.
I just want to ask one question of the architect and Marnie. Is this is this a significant enough remodel, excuse me, for to have solar on the roof? And because my understanding is all new and construction needs solar, and I I don't think I saw anything about it on the drawings. I may have missed it.
You want to comment on that, Marnie?
So I do apologize. I am not sure what what the threshold is for the solar requirement. So I'll defer to Sam in the event that maybe he knows.
Yeah, so to to respond to that, no, this project would not kind of cross that threshold that would require solar panels. Really, in in my experience, my understanding, the building code, only if this was a completely new home from the ground up would we be required to do that. But with the exception of the addition, you know, this really is just a remodel of the existing home. So no, no solar is proposed, nor would it be required.
Yeah, that's that's my understanding too, that the solar requirement only applies to new homes. But we can, maybe staff can get us a definitive definition on that from the from the state.
Will do.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions for the architect or staff? Okay, Mr. Commissioner Dells, let you continue.
I'll make a motion to approve item DS dash twenty to three seven six with the resolution that is in our packet, which provides both conceptual and final design approval and condition twenty-nine regarding the skylights be removed.
Okay, we have a second?
Sure, I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution for approval as per staff with the one change, we remove special condition number twenty-nine, the skylights will be allowed to be installed in the position as per the plans. Is there any more discussion on this item? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, the next item on the public hearings tonight is item number seven. This is a design study. It's DS two one dash one nine six, the Westbrook project. This is consideration of a track one design study referral for changes to exterior materials, site coverage, windows, doors, adding a driveway gate, changing the wood shingle roof to a copper roof, and other minor modifications located on Lincoln Street for southwest of Ninth Avenue, the single-family residential zone. Can we have the staff report, please?
All right, so thank you Chair LaPage. So before you this afternoon is a track one design study referral for the Westbrook residence. This project is currently under construction. It's located on Lincoln to southwest of Ninth Avenue. It is a standard four thousand square foot lot. The existing home is a little over twenty-seven hundred square feet. And this is a legal non-conforming property with respect to floor area, side yard setbacks, and site coverage. Back in two thousand nineteen, the applicant proposed some interior and exterior modifications that qualified as a track one design study. These were reviewed and approved by staff. It is a pretty extensive remodel, including all new electrical plumbing and heating, replacement of all windows and doors, new exterior paint, light fixtures, new roof material, and then modifications to site coverage. The building permit was issued in September of two thousand twenty, and as I mentioned, the project is currently under construction. So during construction, the applicant made some changes to the project, and staff has grouped all of those changes together and presenting them as a single package to the commission this afternoon. So those modifications include changing the roof material, the some exterior siding changes, adding a driveway gate, some modifications to the the number and location of light fixtures, window and door changes, modifications to the rear yard patio, the addition of a compressor in the rear yard, other site coverage modifications, and new landscaping. So with respect to the roof material, the prior residents had a tar and gravel roof. The two thousand nineteen design study approved a change in that material to a wood shingle. The existing roof is a two and twelve pitch. The structure of the roof has remained the same. There's an existing ridge skylight that runs down the center of the roof. The applicant is now proposing to change the cedar shingles to a a copper material. You can see a sample of it here on the screen. The applicant is proposing to pre-patina the copper to mitigate some of those shiny impacts that new copper has upon installation. Staff has not been supportive of this material for this residence. The design guidelines talk about wood shingles still being the preferred material with clay tile slate and concrete tile considered at times when appropriate. Also, composition shingle may be considered, but metal, plastic, and glass are generally inappropriate unless the planning commission finds otherwise. Also, the design guidelines discourage faux finishes, and the pre-patina would qualify as a faux finish. So staff has concerns about glare impacts with metal roofs and specifically with copper in its natural state. There is a lack of tree canopy over this particular roof. There's a lack of shade to mitigate any glare impacts. And then also the north neighbor's line of sight because that they sit above the project. They look out over the roof really in its entirety. So the potential for impact there is high. Also, in the past, the planning commission has expressed some concerns with copper and the impact that that has on our our local environment. So here you can see a picture. This is from the north neighbor's sunroom looking out on to the the roof of the the Westbrook residence. So for these reasons, staff is not been supportive of this material. There is a condition of approval that requires that they retain the wood shingle that was approved in the two thousand nineteen design study. The applicant is also proposing to install a driveway gate. Again, this is a standard four thousand square foot lot, so the the frontage is forty foot wide. The residence was constructed at the fifteen-foot setback. So the the yard is the minimum amount allowed under our development standards. It's currently primarily hardscape with some areas carved out for planting. And there's a four-foot solid wall that screens the the front yard from the right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to install a fourteen-foot wide driveway gate. This is a picture from June two thousand eleven. Staff was looking for some historical photographs that showed the driveway gate that was there previously, but we haven't been able to to find any. So this appears to be a new element being added to this property. The proposed driveway gate would be a solid wood panel gate. Staff does have concerns that, you know, this is further going to close off the property from the street and the public way. It would be limited to four feet in height, which is the maximum height allowed for fences, wall and walls in the front setback. And so for these reasons, staff is not not supporting the addition of the driveway gate, and there is a condition of approval that requires this this element to be removed from the plans. With respect to exterior lighting, the two thousand nineteen design study showed four exterior light fixtures on the front elevation and three on the rear. The light fixture does comply with our requirements for being shielded and is within the required lighting level. And I apologize, this this slide is not entirely accurate. The applicant is still proposed is proposing lights on the front elevation, but instead of four, it would be three. And two of the lights would be relocated to the posts at the front entry. In either configuration, staff does not have a concern about the the number or the location of the fixtures. On the rear elevation, the applicant is adding an additional light fixture on the ground floor, as well as four recessed fixtures in the the roof of the of the deck above. All of the the lighting meets our required lumen levels. See, I don't have, the design guidelines do allow for lighting at all building entries as well as at outdoor use areas. Staff finds that the proposed lighting does meet the design guidelines. With respect to windows and doors, again, we're on the rear elevation here which faces west. The two thousand nineteen design study showed fixed windows on the upper floor on either side of the deck. What has been installed during construction is a slightly larger window that has operable awning awnings at the bottom. The north neighbor has expressed some concerns with these windows not being a hundred percent fixed and allowing noise to kind of filter out and impact them. See. And then similarly, with with respect to some door changes, again, during construction, some slight adjustments have been made. some slight adjustments have been made. The accordion door on the lower level that used to fold from south to north is now, is now been installed in the reverse and an operable door placed at that northern corner of the residence. The north neighbor has, again, expressed concerns about noise impacts from having this operable door so close to their home. Just really quick with regards to exterior paint, the 2019 design study did include approval of a new color palette for the residence. The applicant has changed the colors a little bit throughout construction, but all the colors proposed are within the same sort of general color palette. Currently what's proposed is what you see here, which is a tan color with a darker trim. And the Benjamin Moore that you see on the right is the glazing that would be applied over the paint as the architect described to really preserve the, the wood and the finish over time. Okay, so in the, with the rear yard, this slide shows sort of the, the iteration of the rear yard patio, starting on the left. The patio that was there previously was about 155 square feet in size. The plans identify the finished floor level of that patio at 162. The 2019 design study approved modifications to this patio, which included increasing the size to 344 square feet and then lowering the patio down to a finished floor level of 159. This design study also included an outdoor fireplace and chimney, which I'll talk about on a separate slide. Before the commission this afternoon, under the current design study is a 350 square foot patio, so still roughly the same size, but raised back up at a finished floor level of 161.5. And this allows for a flush patio that the owners can walk out from their house and not have to navigate any steps. The north neighbor has expressed some concerns and we'll talk a little bit more kind of about those, about the, the noise and the privacy impacts from having the patio at a higher level and how that would impact the enjoyment of their property. With respect to the fireplace, the chimney is on the taller side, so it's 10 feet, 10 inches total, including the cap. This is a gas appliance, so it's not a wood burning, wood burning fireplace. No changes are proposed. The architect has assured us that even with the patio being raised back up, that the total height of the fireplace will still not exceed that 10 foot, 10 inch height as measured from the grade below. And we did ask the architect to stake the fireplace so that we could get a really good visual on the massing and what that would look like. And this shows a couple different angles of the proposed fireplace. The applicant is also proposing to install a compressor in the rear yard. It would be setback about eight feet, eight inches to the side property line. The south neighbor did reach out to staff and express some concerns about noise from this unit. The manufacturer specifications indicate that it is within our allowable noise levels. This is something we would typically look at during the building permit stage. But again, all the changes have been packaged together for the planning commission's review. Staff also wants to note that in the 2019 design study, there was a mechanical room that was internal to the home on the lower level. And this, this room or closet was to contain the furnace and the instant hot water heater. It appears that maybe some things have changed during construction that has caused the relocation of these, of this equipment and maybe the architect can speak a little bit more to that. And then also, the 2019 design study did require the applicant to submit a landscape plan, so they have provided a landscape plan. It has been reviewed by the city forester. She has made some recommendations for changes in the plant palette. Those have all been incorporated into the conditions of approval. And I won't go into too much detail, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer that. So staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt the resolution approving the alterations with certain conditions. Some of these conditions include retaining the wood shinger, wood shingle roof, removing the driveway gate from the plans, ensuring that the maximum height of the chimney does not exceed the 10 feet, 10 inches as measured from grade. Installing two upper canopy trees, revising the plant palette per the city foresters recommendations, also adding privacy plants on the north side of the patio to mitigate some of those noise and visual impacts to the north neighbor. And then also, any impermeable site coverage that is removed cannot be replaced with more impermeable coverage because the site is over on what is allowed. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the, for staff regarding this application from the commissioners?
Thank you.
Okay, I think there's any question.
I have some questions.
All right, Commissioner Dells.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to connect all the dots on this one because it's complicated from a historical perspective. In 2019, a, a project was approved. And I think, well, I'll just speak for myself, I, it, it looks like a very significant remodel that did not cross the threshold into what requiring approval of the planning commission of us. And I know there is some disagreement from the neighbors as to whether even that was appropriate or not. I, I don't, it's unproductive for me to go there. But what we now have, and this, Marnie, I'm good, it's questionable in a minute, but you know, what we now have are a couple of things. We've got some items that have already been installed that are not in agreement with the 2019 plans. And I think that that is, that would include the windows and the doors on the back and then at least partially the patio, which is, you know, the beginnings of the patio. And then we have a second category of things that are requests for new things that would not, you know, that have not been installed. And I think those would include the fireplace, the rough material, the, the color palette on the siding material, some lighting, and this compressor. So I guess my first question, Marnie, am I, am I right so far?
Yes, that, that is an accurate summary.
And I'm, I'm going to try a little bit of a hypothetical idea and if, if you can't go there, I understand. But with, you know, if, in the aggregate, if all of these items had been included in the 2019 submission, would that have pushed it over the threshold, do you think, to have come to the planning commission?
So one of the items that we did discuss in 2019 was the roof material. We did talk at that time about using a metal. And staff's direction to the applicant was that we would absolutely take that to the planning commission for consideration. They opted not to do that, which is fine. The, you know, staff also worked with the north neighbors during the review of the 2019 design study, so you know, certain changes to the project were made in order to mitigate or remove potential impacts that would have elevated the project to the planning commission.
Thanks, thanks for that answer. And so, and in a normal situation, there's, again, the, let me just go to the ones, the three items where, let's say, progress was made. So the windows, the doors, and the patio. And I believe we've been through a kind of recent conversation about the fact that if, if there are changes from plan, that the, those changes need to be approved by staff and with the planning commission, if that's, if that, if it's deemed for that. And, and am I right that these changes were made without approval?
That is correct.
Okay. And I'm sorry to sound like a lawyer here, but like on the, on the windows and the doors, are those, is, is that common to have, for example, instead of one big window, have one that comes with a couple, you know, with the two open openings or for, you know, a, a door to open left versus right? I realize that the, the change in the doors is that the sliding door is moving, I'll call it left to right instead of right to left, and that the, the pedestrian door was moved from the north, sorry, south side to the north side. Would, would, had those come to staff, can you speculate on, on whether they would have been approved or not based on your experience over the years?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon for, for some things to change during construction. And certainly, you know, some contractors are better at reaching out to us before making the change. Ultimately, we see these changes when we do a, a rough planning inspection or we do our final inspection, and then we have to make a decision as to whether or not those changes could potentially have an impact to the neighbors. Specifically with regards to the window and the door changes on the rear elevation, while I know that the north neighbor had concerns about windows on the north elevation, I would not have anticipated that these changes would have been a concern to them and I most likely would have approved them at a staff level. I did not have the opportunity to, to do that. But, but to answer your question, that is potentially something that I would have deemed minor and approved as part of a building permit revision.
Okay, thank, thank you for going there on those hypotheticals, that, that really helps me learn. I think I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the commissioners or staff?
Not right now.
Okay, all right, thank you, Marnie. Okay, would the applicant like to address the, or not the applicant, would Al Sroin, I think he's the architect for this project to represent, would you like to address the planning commission regarding this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I represent the, the homeowner, the Westbrooks. And just a little bit of history that, oh, I'd like to start out by thanking Marnie for her very detailed and thorough presentation. I, I think she has a great handle on, on a fairly complex planning commission item. In the, in the very beginning, we did have some negotiations back and forth with the, with the Ruffetos, the neighbor. Let's see, are we still, can you hear me? What happened?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you. You have, you have five minutes for your presentation now.
Oh, okay. I lost visual contact. So, and during that time, for the original approval, we eliminated a four foot by six foot window in the great room on the north wall. We changed the window in the, the existing sized window in the garage to an obscure glass. And then we added a six foot tall obscure glass on the upper deck, all for the sake of additional privacy as requested by the neighbor. The, the current conditions and findings of the staff, we concur with all of the findings and we agree to all of the standard conditions. And with regard to the special conditions, we agree to all of those with the exception of items 24 and 25, which I would like to discuss. The items 24 regarding the roof, we originally received approval with a shake roof. One of our concerns then and now is the fact that we only have a two and a half and 12 slope, which is not ideal for any kind of a wood roof and in terms of longevity of that roof. The original roof, which was there for many years, was tar and gravel and I'm sure was, was not the most sight, sightly looking roof for the neighbors who get to see quite a bit of that roof. The, the, the reason we were proposing a copper standing seam roof is that we know it will last forever. It patinas very nicely in, in the Carmel area due to the, the high moisture content and humidity and the salt in the air. And the copper very quickly turns to a, a beautiful brown patina that we all enjoy, we see all around Carmel. And we think that that roof will not create any glare or any issues with sightlines or visibility for the neighbor. And for those reasons, we'd like you to consider this as an alternative roof. With regard to the driveway gate, the, years ago, you can tell by the way that the, the concrete wall was built and then the jams were installed at the end of the wall to support the hinges for, for a gate. Now, it's been many years, there has not been a gate there. The primary reason we would like to put a gate is that the front, the front patio is the only patio on the main level that would, would afford an opportunity for grandchildren to play in the front yard. And, and with the gate, it would be a safe situation for them to do so. And that's the primary reason that we're considering that. I have, I have a, can you, can you see the? Let's see. I have drawn a, an alternate gate idea to share with the commission that would allow for some visual penetration through the gate and still meet the code, safety code for small children and that sort of thing. So I'd like you to give that some consideration. If, if you're inclined to approve the gate concept, I think we could work with the staff to come up with something that was visually acceptable and, and still safe and secure for the small children who may be playing in the front yard.
Okay, is that, that your five minutes are up now, that concludes your presentation?
Yes, I know there are quite lengthy items that the Ruffetos are going to bring to your attention and I will respond to those.
Yeah, I'll, I will allow you a three minute rebuttal after the comments.
Thank you.
Okay, and also additional time is needed to, so we understand the issues at hand. Okay, thank you, all right, at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this? I know the Ruffetos would probably like to go now.
Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering,
I'm, I'm wondering if I can share my screen with the commission, and we would briefly, that is Nora and I, like to just take you through our slide presentation. Very quickly, it will all be concluded, we believe, well under our, our combined six minute limitation. And we'd certainly be prepared to answer any questions that you might have. But before, i- if you would allow me just a, a fraction of a moment, I, I would just like to comment very, very briefly on the, the acts leading up to the final approval. And then fact that, and, and I think Marnie would attest to this, that we were, in fact, in two thousand nineteen, headed to the planning commission. And it was, and I hate to misphrase this, but it was a ultimatum that Marnie placed before the applicant. Margie. That, that regarded the window, that we would either be coming to the planning commission with the project, or the window would need to be removed. And, and the, the applicant chose to remove the, the window so the project could move forward. So with that, if you'll allow me to share my screen, we'll move quickly through our slides. Thank you. I'm sorry.
You know how to share your screen, Michael?
I think that I do.
At the bottom, it says to share screen.
Right.
We can see your screen now.
Okay, good. So, I, I'm right to our, our slide number two, and, you know, we worked with staff in two thousand nineteen, and the results were the approved plans. And today, you're being asked to forgive violations for work completed without approval. Back in April, you rejected unpermitted skylights and spoke strongly of supporting the permitting process. Later in May, you supported Margie Williams with her concerns about privacy and light. We're asking that you approach this whole issue with that same resolve and empathy for neighbor concerns that you've shown on those other projects. Slide three summarizes our requested planning commission actions. On slide four, these are the approved plans for the patio, and they call out the elevation. The difference was and still is three feet. There is no retaining wall of any sort in the approved plans. The fireplace then was built to grade. In this slide, you see the constructed cinder block wall that exists today. And while the fifth course at the top has since been removed, you can clearly see that there are four courses of cinder block, eight, eight inches plus mortar, representing thirty-six inches, and you can also see that the footing is grade. So what you're looking at is a thirty-six inch increase over grade, extending well beyond a small patio that existed before. On this slide, I've tried to represent for you the, the impact that a six foot tall person will have standing on this patio and looking into our home through the lower levels, those are the red lines, versus the green lines, which represent that same six foot person standing on the approved patio from two thousand and nineteen. And you just have to stand in the family room, and I don't know how persuasive it was without line of sight studies or mannequins standing on the site today. But it, hopefully, it was, it was compelling. Slide seven just illustrates a, an idea we'd like to leave with you regarding the possible relocation of the fireplace. The oak trees that were there in two thousand nineteen have been removed. It presents an opportunity to possibly reorient the fireplace, protect us from some of the views looking up into our home, and move the fireplace to the southwest corner of the, of the Westbrook patio. And this is, I, I think both Marnie and, and Mr. Sroian have, have shown you this. The, the lower door level system, I was a little surprised and disappointed to hear Marnie suggest that she might have approved this change over the counter administratively. When you look at the scope of this change, this operable door over here that I'm pointing to, right here, is supposed to be down at the other end. That's eighteen feet away. I, I've heard commissioners talk about their frustration over plans that require small, small moves, and sometimes the process or the, the issues that neighbors sometimes raise. This is not that. This is an enormous change, and the impact on us is enormous as well. We've witnessed this, we've experienced it, okay? Even during construction, coming in and out of this door, the workers on the project, in and out of this door, the voices, the noise, the sounds, the opening and the closing and the slamming of this door, already during construction, play out our worst fears about what happens when this gets changed. The rear upper corner window, you know, i- i- it was shown in so many ways, on so many iterations of drawings, as fixed to us, all right? Both, both descriptively and in drawings in two thousand and nineteen, even in April thirtieth of this year, all right? Still fixed, a larger size, but shown graphically and in text as fixed. I'll, I'll stop, I'm gonna let Nora talk to you about the roof and.
We've looked into the metal roofing, and our objection to a metal roof is based approximately, is based mostly on the proximity to our home, the size resulting harm from reflected glare, UV rays, and infrared rays. This, of course, you all got to see today, so I'm not gonna show you that again. This slide is from the Department of Energy cautioning regarding glare and reflected heat from metal roofing. And of course, Claudio Ortiz already testified in front of you earlier this year that the least amount of roof glare that he could find with any manufacturer was twenty-three percent. So that's a concern for us. This is just a slide, once again, wrapping up our concerns over the things that have changed and that have been unapproved. And finally, I want to circle back to our original slide, this one might be a little bit easier to see what we're talking about. Our major concerns still focus on the proposed raised patio, the lower operable door installed on the wrong end, and the metal roof. In its simplest form, our request is that the commission order the project to be built according to the December two thousand nineteen plans and January twenty twenty approval. We ask that you please do not reward contractors for abusing the city's approval and permitting process by allowing any of the unapproved work to remain. Do not send a message that disregard is rewarded with approval and that process and permission are not important. Thank you all for your time and patience. I know you've extended us a lot over the last couple of months. We've seen you several times, and we appreciate your listening to us and helping us with this. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, I don't see any hands going up. I'm gonna let Mr. Sroian, I'm gonna give you three minutes to rebut. I would suggest use those minutes to address specific information that was presented by the Ruffetos, or anything that you can give us to just provide any other illumination regarding the, this application today.
Thank you. Let's see here. With regard to the patio retaining wall, as you could see when you were at the site today, the existing, the patio that was there before is at the same grade that we would like the entire patio. And it's, it, it will be no more than thirty inches above grade at any point. Now, what you see out there in the field is where the grade has already been pulled away when the foundation was put in. But that grade, when that grade comes back to its natural grade, we will be no, no higher than thirty inches at the highest point above grade. And as you approach, and that's at the far end, as you approach the home, it, it becomes more like two foot above grade, and then eventually meets the level of the residence. With regard to the relocation of the fireplace, if, if moving the fireplace to the other side of the patio is truly a an improvement, and in their minds, we'd be willing to concede that and move the fireplace to the other side. With regard to the, the door system, the, the, the single opening door on the lower level is approximately ten, eleven feet from their residence. And as we know in Carmel, we've got forty foot lots. It's very difficult to not hear your neighbor at some point. And that's one of the charms that we all endure in Carmel, is that we live close together and we, we can enjoy that. The, with regard to the, the glare on the roof, that's another item that, that we disagree with in terms of copper. Now, most aluminum standing seam painted with a paint coating, metal roofs do emit a certain percentage of glare, around twenty percent, I'm told. But copper is a completely different element, and once it's patinaed, it's a matte finish and emits very little glare if any. The, let's see, what else I have? And once again, the, the concern over the vent that we'd like in the, in the bottom of the windows, which would provide natural ventilation in the home, again, those are significant distance from the neighbor and shouldn't be any issue with regard to privacy and or, or sound. And the Ruffetos also brought up the issue of the sound emitting from the vents from the instant hot water heater, which is located in the garage. And that, that vent is about seven feet from the property line, and then another eight feet to their residence. So I really think it's, it's a significant distance away. However, we're willing to relocate those to the other side of the garage and which would put them even further away. And the instant hot water decibel rating ranges between fifty-four point eight and fifty-two point two, which is well under the sixty decibel requirement. So I think that shouldn't be a real issue for them at all in terms of sound. I'm open for any questions from the planning commission. So this concludes my rebuttal at this point.
Okay, are there any questions for?
Yes, I do have one question. Has anyone explored how long that patina would last on the roof?
My experience with copper, we've been using it for thirty years in Carmel, is that the patina never goes away, it just stays a nice golden dark brown. And, and it never light, I've never seen it lighten.
No, I mean, because you're coating it with a patina. I'm, 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 and it's not the natural patina that, that happens with copper.
No, what, what we can do, and, and we offered to do it if it would please the, the neighbor, what we can do is accelerate the natural oxidation. And there's several ways to do that, and there's, there's chemicals you can put on, on it to do that and get the natural brown tone, or you can, you can get you know, a green patina tone or a blue patina tone. And I would propose to stick with the natural brown patina if we, if we use the copper roof.
That concludes your questions?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, thank you, Al. Okay, I'm gonna ask one more time, are there any additional members of the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? I don't see any hands. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Mr. Bolton, wanna jump in or you wanna take a pass?
How about if I take a stab at part of it?
Take a stab. That's good. I like that terminology.
I know I'm gonna miss half of it. I'm not supportive of the metal roof. I'll just start there. I feel there's a very high likelihood of glare and heat gain on the neighbors. And I think that probably stands for any amount of sheen from any metal roof. The proximity of this property to the neighbors is extremely close, and the angle of the roof seems like it would aim whatever light reflectivity and heat towards the neighbors. So I think we need to explore a different material for that roof, so I'm not in favor of the metal. With regards to those windows on the backside with the awnings on the bottom, I have no objection to them. I think that the offer to change the location of the, of the fireplace to the other side will help mitigate some of the privacy concerns from the neighbors. I think a lot of the issue was concern about looking up into their property, and with the chimney and the fireplace oriented the other direction, the likelihood of that has decreased. I was on site, I didn't see a very large impact, to be honest, on the neighbor visually from the backyard at the proposed height. So I don't, I don't have a really strong objection to the change in the finished height of the patio in the rear. I don't think it's gonna be a very big impact. Regarding, let's see, regarding the location and the installation of the heat pump, it needs to be shrouded or something. I think it's gonna potentially have a noise impact on neighbors. Maybe it could be relocated along the south side, towards the east part of the property, there's a little bump in along that wall line. That would only direct any sound towards the southern neighbor's garage, which would mitigate any kind of sound issue directed towards the southern neighbors, I think. I'm not certain if that's really a possible occasion, but I think it's worth exploring. Otherwise, I do think it would need some kind of mitigation for noise. I know those things aren't especially loud, but I fear that the could potential, the potential could be there. Let's see here. I don't have any real objection to any of the lighting changes, I think the staff did a good job on that. I think actually the staff did a wonderful job on the entire project. Gosh, I'm kind of fading here. I'm gonna have to come back. I'm tapping out for now.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bolton. There's a lot, a lot of stuff to cover. I, I just wanted to summarize that the applicant did, as Commissioner Bolton pointed out, agree to rel- Agreed to relocate the fireplace, which I think is a request of the the neighbors, one of their primary requests, so that's kind of. I think we should, we should honor that in our discussion and the other um. Thing that the applicant agreed to was relocating the uh. On demand hot water heater, and I think that is something that the neighbor was concerned about, so so those two things have been conceded. And so we can focus our comments on the other items at hand. Okay, Commissioner Locke, would you like to speak at this time or?
Sure, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Um so let me add on to Commissioner Bolton's comments. Well, first of all, I'm sorry that a lot of this stuff has taken place without having gotten approval ahead of time. Um and yes, I was probably the biggest. Person as far as verbalizing my need for consistency with rules and regulations and following. Um permitting guidelines and following the requirements of the jurisdiction. Um so I think that undertaking uh the replacement of doors in opposition to how they were approved, that kind of thing. Should not have occurred. Um and so I'm I'm just gonna put that out there right to begin with, but um. I would say that um my biggest concerns about the current project. Are the HVAC system. And I find it kind of interesting that the proposed location is right next to the master bedroom downstairs. Um I put in a heat pump system at my house in Skyline Forest ten years ago. And the thing was extremely noisy, so I don't know. Um when it's on, it blows, it sounds like there's an airplane coming in to land, or at least that was the system I had at the time. I know this one is um rated at no more than fifty eight to sixty decibels. Um I would like to say that if this is the one that is installed, I would like to see it moved. Um I think Chris mentioned there was a spot on the southeast side of the house that you could. Move it so it wouldn't have such an impact on other neighbors. Um I would also require that you uh that they have to put in the optional night quiet modes to reduce outdoor. Unit sound for levels with automatic activation, which is part of the specs for the system. That was in the on the plans, so I think that should be a requirement and I think it should be shielded. Um I am not supportive of a gate on this property. And while the argument could be made that children might be playing in that front area. I don't think children would be playing in that front area, I think your kids are gonna be out on the back patio. And if you have a concern about those, you can put a gate on the side um of the house to keep the kids in the back. Um I I just don't see that as something um that I'm at all supportive of. Um I don't have a problem with the windows, again. Um the only thing I kind of have a problem with is this change of the door. From the south side to the north side on the west elevation. Um and I just, I'm actually kind of shocked at this because. If your planning commission doesn't support this, you're gonna have to replace that whole door system. Um the roofing, uh we've had issues in the past with chemical. I mean, we've we've discussed and I think we actually denied a request for a roof that was proposing a chemical treatment on it. Um the Carmel Bay is an area of special biological significance, we do not want any kind of a chemical runoff. Off a property and so um I think that that is a concern of mine. Um if we were to approve a metal roof, then I would wanna see it as a totally matte metal roof. Um and I do have concerns about the glare and the heat. Um because of the location of the Rofetto's property, which is literally just above that roof, so they're definitely gonna have. A solar impact in in terms of heat and the fact that they have us um a sunroom right there. That sunroom will get even warmer than it probably already gets when the sun's shining. Um. Uh the height of the patio, I'm conflicted on this, um you know, again, I think when. Planning staff worked with the neighbors and there was an agreement that it was going to be a lower patio. That that was what had been approved, I don't necessarily have an issue with. It going back up to its former elevation. Um given the facts that we've talked about already, which is that if the fireplace is moved. I don't think that focus on um the sunroom area would be something you'd have people looking up at the neighbor's house to to whatever. And I don't think that necessarily those view impacts would be as bad as they. Um might appear, um I I really don't think that people could see into the neighbor's house. Standing out there other than to see the ceiling um and somebody who might be standing next to the windows, I don't. I I I'm kind of on that one, um. And I think, other than that, exterior lights. Um I think whatever was proposed originally probably should have been um continued. Uh there are the under deck lighting on the um ground floor. Um and I don't really have a problem with that, except that I have a neighbor right now who has. Um recessed lights underneath a patio and they still impact. Uh me as a neighbor, even though they supposedly comply with the city's code, so um. But I think uh I think that's that's not the biggest thing, so anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke, uh Commissioner Dallas, would you like to make your comments?
Um yeah, I think I'm gonna be a lot less generous than my colleagues so far. Um you know, if this had come to us as a planning commission item at the beginning. Um I feel a lot more supportive of a lot of the things that are being requested here. Um and I'm not gonna go into each one uh on a speculative basis. Um but that's not what happened, uh you know, the the applicant is a professional who understands. That there is a line that you don't cross if you don't wanna go to the planning commission and there's ample evidence. That that's exactly what happened, um that there was a negotiation with the neighbors and that Marnie was um uh. You know, rightly and professionally part of that um on behalf of the city. Um so um and then um instead of doing exactly what was approved to stay on that track. Um they went and did things that weren't approved and did not ask. Um for permission before doing it nor for forgiveness after doing it until they got caught. And there was a stop work order. Um and then given, they were now given the opportunity to repackage all that stuff that that their violations. Um into a new request and then throw in some more things. Um so I'm very troubled by the process here, so I'm not inclined to be real supportive and rewarding. Um and um I'll go through them, I think the patio is the most egregious. Of these um that um you know, Mr. Sarayan has made the point about where a grade was. Well, I can't tell you where grade was because you dug a hole and put a foundation and a footer in there. I don't know where the foundation was to start with, um all I have is um you know, hundred and fifty X feet. But um what was approved was a patio at a grade. Two and a, I'll I'll call it two and a half to three feet lower than what you were doing. Um and a patio with those um cinder blocks uh going out in a peninsula from the back door, well lovely. Um and again, if this had been, if you had asked me to approve that two years ago. Um I certainly would have considered it, but now you're just asking to be able to keep it there. And um I'm not supportive of that at all, I think it needs to go and I think you need to put your patio back at the level it was at. Um and you know, I I'm not just being, while I'm being punitive on that, I also do think there are. Um impacts to the neighbors that are not insignificant. You know, it was my view of standing, again, I couldn't figure out exactly where grade used to be, but I tried. And you know, looking up at the neighbor on, you know, his deck from grade versus. Um what would be the the top of those cinder blocks was different. And it was a lot different, and if I was a neighbor, I would feel like it was a lot different. And it was different also from inside the house, so it was, you know, different in terms of looking into the backyard, it was di- different looking into the deck and it was different looking up into the sun. So I'm, I I I will not support a motion that includes the patio. Uh the roof, I think I'm agreeing with my colleagues um that the um. The copper, it again, patinaed copper lovely, um I think it's just gonna be too reflective for too long. Um and um and even just a matte metal finish, given. The exposure um again from the from the neighbors um. It's is a lot and you know, cause they're almost looking at a wall of roof from out of from their house. Uh what was approved is cedar shingles, um and again, I would not support a motion that has anything other than cedar cedar shingles. Uh the lower level door um is. It's a big mistake that somebody made, um either on purpose or by accident back of weather shield windows, but. Um the I I really do think there is, and and again, it's, you know, it it was a change that was made. From the original plans without approval. And because of that, I think that they need to have a do-over. And put that door back on the other side, cause it is, I mean, to Mr. Sarayan's point about, we all live in small spaces. Little things like where a door is have a big impact on the neighbor. And if you can put a door in the middle of a property versus right next to your neighbor, that actually is a big deal. Um and and again, it's what was approved and I think it needs to go back and be what um is is built. I'll stop with the upper window, I mean, you know, the fixed versus the um. No, actually I won't, I mean, I think it's the same point. Um something was approved and you put something else in, I think you need to go back and put in what was approved. Um I don't think there is a big privacy impact with those operable windows, it it really is more a matter of process and violation. The outdoor fireplace, um. The the offer to move it is great, given my position on all these other things, I'm not sure that that offer would still be there for me, for us, but I think. It it does help, but I don't know that it changes the privacy issues really. I'm not sure that. You you never know what what furniture's gonna get put out there, where it's gonna be and who looks, you know, in what direction. I think moving it probably is helpful, it's hard to know. The exterior lights, again, I think should be what was approved. The compressor, um you know, I'm troubled by the fact that. When in twenty nineteen this project was approved, um there must have been some place. Some other place to handle HVAC. And I I'm told from my own asked question on the site today that that was gonna be in a mechanical room. Um well, now that changed, and why, why did that change, you know, that it would, suddenly it's outside. Um and um you know, and and now presenting a noise issue for the neighbors that wasn't there in twenty nineteen. So, no. Um and on the gate, um while I'm still learning the uh our our. Gate etiquette, if you will, it's not the right word, but um you know, when when we approve a gate and when we don't. Um I can't find in the design guidelines any prohibition against gates, but I uh what I see is that. Our our design guidelines um encourage openness. And you know, that we're not building walls that allow people to hide, you know, essentially hide behind the walls and hide for their property behind the walls. Um and um uh in in this case. Um for the reasons that staff has are have already stated, that you've already got a solid wall. And then um you're proposing a solid gate, I really do think you are, you know, creating that enclosed. Um feeling and um I I haven't had the benefit of seeing pla- plan B on that one, but. I I think for this particular one, you know, any gate next to that wall is just gonna create a. You know, mo- more of a feeling of seclusion than inclusion and somebody else made the point that I. I think the backyard is probably the place of gathering anyway, even with the patio three feet lower. No problem with the change in the color um palette at all. Um and um and yes, if you can move the venting of that uh. Water heater, um that would seem helpful, although I think the fact that it's in the garage already is really gonna. Limit most of the sound impact on that, that's what I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Dallas, uh Commissioner Lehman, your comments please?
Sure, um well, I I appreciate everyone's comments and I. Feel like I'm um. I really appreciate Commissioner Locke's um analysis. Um and here's um where I stand. Um first of all, I'm pleased that um Al has agreed to move that chimney. I think that will really help um the Rofetto's privacy in the backyard. Um I'm um not sure the patio, the height difference is the issue. I think the location of the chimney and the height of the chimney is, it's so high. Um uh I. I would really like to see it not as gargantuan on this little lot, but. Um I realize we approved it, um and so for in my case, it would just be a. A request of Mr. Sarayan that he um maybe think of redesigning it and getting it down to a manageable scale. Because it's it's unlike um yeah, anything that would be necessary on such a small lot. Um the um. I I just um, I'm amazed that we're looking at a four thousand square foot lot. With two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six square feet between the garage and the house. Or twenty seven thirty-five in the house and we can't find a place down in that lower level. For the mechanical equipment, surely a small closet can keep that mechanical. Mechanical equipment and um. And it it can be quiet, it can be soundproofed. Um so it doesn't bother the people living in the house and it doesn't bother the neighbors. Um hey, you know, I I'm talking about nine square feet out of almost three thousand square feet, so. It's, you know, it's it's kind of crazy, those units are small and they and they certainly can be. Don't have to be on the outside of the house. Um uh. Uh the the metal roof um is um. I again, I think if it if it needs to be a metal roof, I I think we we have a, we have a real situation with fire. In California and a real situation here in Carmel with fire. So I'm not a proponent um of uh wood roofs. I I was, I I I put a wood shake roof on our home um a few years ago. But as things got worse and worse in climate change. And the fires got worse and worse and the drought comes, I think um. We really have to move away from wood roofs and I'm not, I am objecting to the copper. Because I don't think it can get as matte as uh a standing seam metal roof. Um and uh you know, it's, I I and I don't think the wood roof will hold up well. On that um shallow pitch, so I'm I I'm I'm for a metal roof, I'm not for the copper. Um I um we have just a a month or so ago. Um turned down another home um requesting a gate just for their. Dogs or whomever to run around and um uh we're faced with this um now twice on this. And um, uh, we're faced with this um now twice on this um uh, on, on this agenda. And I, I, I don't think we should have them. I think um, we had an existing gate on our home and in the, you know, and when we rebuilt the house, we removed the gate. It's a big nuisance. Um, in my estimation, if they want to enclose their grandchildren for safety, well, they've got, they've got the rear patio and, and um, it, it, it just, it, it, it doesn't um, I, I think we, we need to keep this community open and keep the tradition of openness and not um close us behind walls. And I think that's what the gate would become. Um, the door is a big problem, I know, because it, I, I don't have an objection, let me deal with the easy stuff. I don't have an objection to the, to the window. I don't think it's that much of a privacy issue that there is an awning that um at the bottom of that large window. Um, I, I think we have to tolerate a little bit, uh, you know, from neighbor to neighbor. But I, I do think that the door is an issue. It's, it's, and it's, and I know it's a, it's a, it's a big deal to pull out the mechanics and to order. It's an expensive situation to change. But it, it's um, it's really a violation of um, of the, it's such a big violation of the plans, knowing the Raffetos were already so up in arms about their privacy. Um, I said, oh, I, I would have a hard time approving the door as it has been changed. Um, and I think I've, I've, I think I've covered it all the points that we're looking at. So that's where I am.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. You know, this is a really complicated application. And it seems like there, you know, there's a couple of big issues here. One, one of the overriding issues is, is that uh, we're being asked to approve things which were, were done, already done, and they should have had approval. And Commissioner Dell spoke very strongly about that. So that, that, that complicates things for us. I think it really complicates it for all the commissioners. Uh, normally, we try to look at um, you know, impacts that are being proposed. And then we, we mitigate those impacts or we deny those potential impacts. And when something's already built, um, it puts us in a bad position. So because this is complicated, I'm trying to think of a way that we can kind of get to a motion on this without getting overly complicated. So I've kind of made a, a list of all the items here which we're, we're looking at. We've got the gate, roof, windows, doors, deck height, heat pump, color, fireplace. Was there any other thing that any of the commissioners that thought about that we were discussing? They want to remind me of?
Um.
I'll see any hands going up.
Well, the, the relocation of the chimney.
Yeah, well, I've got the fireplace relocated, I got that.
Michael, would you, would you read your list again?
Okay, I've got the gate. And I, and, and so far, what I've heard on the list, what I've heard, I've heard no support for the gate. For the roof, no support for the roof. Uh, the window vents, uh, I haven't, other than the fact they did it without a permit, without approval, I haven't heard, I, I've heard approval for the windows. With the exception that it was done without prior approval. Uh, the doors, um, primarily, I heard that they, they weren't supported, I think, by three commissioners. I think Commissioner Bolton was okay with the doors. I am not, I, I'm, I'm okay with the door, other than the fact that it was done without prior approval. And that is um, a big concern for the commission. So we're a little split on that. But I would say there's a lot of uh opinions been expressed here about the fact that this was work that was changed from the approved work without approval. Okay, uh, the deck height, it seems to me there's a split on that. Other than there again, there was work done without prior approval. Now, the work that's been done so far, it isn't a situation where it can't be changed without, you know, without uh, the, it, it can still be changed. So I, I'm going to put that under the split category. Although it is work that was done without prior approval. And I think that's, that's a significant component to this review. Um, the heat pump, what I heard, every, uh, all the commissioners said they want it relocated um and mitigate the sound. Uh, the color, everybody seems, all commissioners said they're okay with that. It, it, it's supported by our guidelines, it's still natural colors. I don't think the neighbors have any issues with that. Um, and then the fireplace, re, uh, it seems like all the commissioners are in favor of relocating it. And that's something that the neighbor asked for and the applicant is conceding that. So I don't really see it as an issue. So uh, having said all that, I think it still comes out to be kind of a complicated project in terms of coming up with a motion. So um, I think we need a little more discussion here before we make the motion. So I'm going to double back and start with Commissioner Bolton, see how he feels about this, what, give me any suggestions here. But I, but what I'm trying to focus on is how we can get to a motion within the context of, of what the planning commissioners have supported or not supported at this point. Mr. Bolton?
Yeah, I, first of all, um, I was, didn't make a statement on the gate and I am not supportive in any way of the gate. Um, that's it. But beyond that, regarding a motion, it seems to me that the splits are um not even. And that a motion could be crafted and voted on, just as you stated them, essentially. Um, and we'll see how it falls out if we try once. I think it'd be uh worth trying just a simple, a straight motion across the board like you stated. And uh, if it fails, then we can double back and try some more.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Dell, what do you, how do you feel about this?
And, yeah, I think you captured, and, and that was good sausage making, Michael. I think you captured it uh very, very well.
Right, sausage director.
Yeah, yeah, and also the, your, your point to me on, on the patio and the doors, and I also did make it for the windows. Um, is um, because the work was done without permission, I, I, I can't reward that. Um, and so I'll, we'll have to see where the rest of our, my, our colleagues go on that. But I can get to okay on the window. All right, so, you know, that, I think you captured that one, right? And, you know, um, I think you captured, the other one we had was exterior lights, by the way.
Right, right.
And um, and I, what I think I heard was not support for anything other than the original plan. That, that said, I'm, I'm somewhat ambivalent. Um, and so can, can go along with.
I'm, I'm going to put that in the split category.
Okay.
But there again, uh, changes were made without prior approval. And that, that is, that's kind of a, I think the thing that's making this difficult for us, really difficult is, is that, um, you know, if we were dealing with this before any work had been done, uh, it would be a lot less complicated. And I know that we, um, I mean, I'm not unsympathetic to the applicant. Um, because, you know, they, they've spent significant money on, on materials and insulation that they could potentially be looking at have to change. But that's something they brought on themselves. So uh, Commissioner Locke, what are your, what are your thoughts about this process we're going through?
Um, I am look, I was just looking through the resolution and I think we may have to turn it back to staff to kind of rework some of this. But um, yeah, I, I, I think your list was spot on. Um, and um, yeah, I, I, I think I could vote on the proposal. I'm again disappointed that we're looking at all of this after the fact. And um, it would have been much easier to have dealt with early on. And um, and I think some of the things that have occurred, should not have occurred and would not be approved. And so I guess we'll find out how we vote shortly.
Okay, and Commissioner Lehman, I think you're the last one to weigh in on this direction I'm trying to go here.
I, I think, um, I um, well, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Locke. That um, and everyone else, that you've, you've put together a good list, Michael. And um, what Commissioner Bolton said about, let's, let's start a motion and um, and then let's, let's see if we can get um some agreement. Or if we're down to one major issue, then let's debate that.
Okay, I'm going to, what I'm going to suggest then is normally I don't make a motion. Uh, I let the other commissioners do it. But I think uh, the, uh, the chair is allowed to make a, a motion under our rules of order. So I think I'm going to make the motion with the understanding that uh, there may be a substitute motion, but I'm just trying to get things focused. And um, get to a point, and as Commissioner Lehman suggested, um, this probably won't be the motion that gets passed, but it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit of a process. So, so I'm going to make a motion that we uh, ex- um, accept the resolution. Let me get the resolution up here. Bear with me for one moment. I had it there. I was looking at it, but uh, kind of got off on this, let's see.
The special conditions are.
Yeah, so we got the, so, okay, let's look at the special, the, the special conditions as per staff. So special condition number 24 um is um, says that they have to stay with the wood shingle roof. And I, all of the uh commissioners were not in support of the uh metal copper roof. I want to add one thing.
No, no.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Lehman, yes.
I, I'm not, you know, I'm not in favor of the copper, but I, I, I would be in favor of a, of a matte metal roof. And I, I've seen Commissioner Locke mention that as well.
Okay, well.
I'm not in favor of wood for that slot.
You're not in fa- you're not in favor of wood. Okay, so we would um, we could make the special condition that the applicant should work with staff to come up with a roof material which is not wood or copper, with the direction that it should be um a matte, if it's going to be, if they're going to propose metal, it should be uh as close to matte finish. And um, or if they, they could propose other types, they could go back to tar and gravel. And uh, I think they could also use um a shingle roof, a, a, a fiberglass shingle roof. So those, so the condition, special condition 24 would be changed that the um cedar wood roof is, shingle roof is not supported and a copper roof would not be supported. I'd also like to mention that in the most recent stormwater runoff analysis that they did, that there, the, the one significant pollutant they found was from copper runoff. So there is evidence that this, there is a significant amount of pollution that's caused from these copper roofs. Okay, the uh special condition number 25, uh, that remains as stated. Uh, special condition number 26, the um, uh, I think the height of the chimney uh should be reduced and it would be relocated to the south side of the patio. I think that represents pretty much what the commission uh supported. Uh, special condition number 27, that should remain. Special condition number 28, uh supports a revised pallet. And let's see, the other things we haven't, so uh.
Mechanical equipment.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm going to start with my list here, but I'll get to that, thank you. Okay, so the windows, special condition number 29, be that the uh, the windows with the vents uh can remain. Special condition number 30 would be that the um, the doors, uh, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say that the doors, uh, the door relocation, operable parts can remain. This may not hold up, I understand there's a split on that, but I'm just going to put it that way for now. Um, special condition number 31 would be regards to deck elevation. I'm going to make that, uh, this, there again, there was a split on this. I'm just going to start with the uh deck can remain at the new proposed height. That may not stand, I don't stand, I don't know. Okay, special condition number 32 would be that the heat pump has to be um soundproofed and, and shrouded. Um, we already talked, did we talk about the fireplace? Yeah, that's, that's 20, that's 26. Um, and then special condition number 20 would be, for the lights would be 33. And because the condition that, the, 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 the motion that I proposed this time supports the relocation of doors and this, this motion will support the uh location of the lights. And this is provided that they are just a down light and that they meet the luminary requirement. So that's, that's the motion that I'm proposing now. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Um, so is there more discussion on this motion? We just, let's, let's have some discussion about this.
Michael, excuse me, could, uh.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yeah, um, uh, I, I think what you did on a couple of those resolutions was you, you didn't include them in the motion, but rather they were, uh, you said they were, it was, they were split issues.
Well, I made a motion on the split issue of the uh, the door, the relocated do- doors on the large um folding doors down there, I made the, my motion supported the relocation. That's, that was, that'd be special condition number 30. Uh, on the deck height, and like I said, this is just starting point.
Right.
Open for discussion. And these are split issues. So I'm, I'm, and, and basically I'm using my bias, which I confess here, that I would support the relocation door. I don't think the relic, relocation of that operable door is going to be a significant privacy issue. I think it, the more significant issue is the fact that it was done prior to approval. And I, and I acknowledge that is a very significant issue. Uh, the other would, would be um, special condition number 31, the deck height. My motion uh supports the proposed new elevation. There again, I understand that um, there's a split on this, this may not stand. But I'm just trying to clarify what my motion is at this point. And then uh, I made um, special condition number 32 about the heat pump, soundproofing, shrouding. Um, and then I made special condition number 33, supporting the relocation of the lights because that goes along with the door. Basically, those lights were relocated because of the requirements, you have to have a light outside of a door. But that may change. So that's, that's the motion. Um, uh, and, and we have a second from Commissioner Bolton. So, but we, was, is there more discussion on this motion at this time?
There's just one point of order. There was already, um, there were already um motions for, uh, resolutions for 29 and 30. Um, so wherever you.
Right, and I'm leaving.
Left off, you've got to bring those back in, like privacy plans and the site coverage.
Let me pull that up. Uh, which you referred to, 29?
29 was the privacy plants and 30 was the site coverage.
Uh, the one I'm looking at, I don't have that, unless I'm looking at the.
It's on, it goes to the next page.
Uh, my apologies.
It's page nine.
My apologies, I didn't scroll, I didn't scroll down, my apology. Okay, yeah, um, okay, so um, which would change my.
Well, you don't have to just add it at the end.
All right, okay, well, uh, these, these, so the uh, uh, privacy plants, the applicant shall include landscape privacy screen between, uh, that shall be included in my motion. And the site coverage, uh, maximum 396 uh square feet impermeable. Site coverage is permitted, so that's included in my motion. So uh, Commissioner Bolton, do you still have a second on that motion based on those additions? So, uh, Commissioner Bolton, do you still have a second on that motion based on those additions?
Yes, second still stands.
Okay, so let's have, so I hopefully understand that, uh, I know it's complicated. Uh, so we have some discussion about that?
Um, yeah.
Or do you wanna go, do we have, do we need?
Stephanie has her hand up.
All right, Stephanie, here we go, Commissioner Locke.
Thank you, um, so I have a couple just comments I wanted to make. Um, on the, on the metal roof, and, you know, I, like I said, I, I'm with Gail on concern about our forest and the potential for wildfire. Um, but as I mentioned at a previous, uh, planning commission meeting, a, the, the metal roofs today can also be stamped metal roofs. And they can look like shingles, they can look like, um, tile, they can look like a number of different, um, older roof styles, and yet they're still a metal, um, product. And I've got some links on that, and Al, if you want me to provide you that information, I can do that. But, um, I think that would be, um, something to look into. Um, the, yeah, and, and as far as your proposed stuff, or your proposed conditions go, um, I can support most of those, I think that there's still a question about the door being next to the Raffetos property. And I do believe that that would have a bigger impact. I mean, you're not gonna have the sliding, um, door open except on days where we have extremely nice weather, and quite frankly, last year it was one of those years where that door probably would have been open most of the summer. And this year, I think it's gonna be closed, and so anybody who's visiting and going outside to the patio will be using the door that, that has been moved from the center to the outside. Um, the lights, my big concern is not so much the lights that are near the doors, and I understand those, it's the lights that are now underneath the, um, upper deck. And, um, and those, those I think should be reduced, I think there were four proposed, and I'm not sure about that, but, um, I think that should probably be reduced, maybe two. Um, and those are really my comments, I think that, uh, um, yeah, I, I, I just, I have a hard time trying to grasp how to deal with the elevation of the patio. Um, and, you know, I, I, and I have to just keep going back to what was approved originally, and why wasn't it built the way it was approved without getting approval for any changes, so.
Okay, um, maybe your comments could help focus there, um, any other, even more discussion, I think, you know, the controversial ones are the splits, and like I said, I just went in a direction does, I mean, we can have substitute motions, so could we get some comments about specifically the doors? I wanna get a little better understanding of where the commissioners are on the relocation of that operable door on the lower folding. So Commissioner Dells, can you, you got your hand up, I was just gonna ask you. Just, let's try to just get specific here without getting too broad, and get more focused.
I appreciate what you're doing. Um, again, I would say, um, for me, the door, and I'll, I'll, I'll give you a couple more points just to, I've got the floor. But to answer your question on the doors, I believe they must be, um, it is not acceptable, the proposal is not acceptable, they need to be redone. And my motivation by that is again, they were installed without, in violation of what was approved, and I can't let that stand. And I don't think we should, as a body, should let that stand, because I think it sends a message to others that this is okay. Um, as lo- especially if you don't get caught, it's really okay.
Well, and the neighbors agreed too, you know, this was all-
Right, exactly, thank you, because that was all part of a negotiation, and now it's been reneged. Um, I will have the same opinion on the patio. Um, that probably no surprise here, I have the same opinion on the patio, that it, it has to go. I mean, they brought in at least a hundred cinder blocks, and, you know, undertook a significant project that's, I get it, significant expense, but it wasn't approved, and it wasn't part of the deal with the neighbors. So it's got, I, it has to go, in my opinion. Um, and I will just weigh in on the, on the roof. I probably won't withhold a vote, um, on, on a metal roof, but what I might prefer is that the, the way that roof looks to this particular neighbor to the north is significant enough that I'm not sure I'm comfortable just letting it be a staff decision, and that it's something that I might ask to come back to us. Um, because I think it's a big enough deal. And, you know, the fact also that our design guidelines aren't warmly embrace of of metal roofs, and are much more supportive of wood roof, wooden roofs, and again, that was what was proposed. I, if, if there were two other votes in supportive of the wooden roof, I would certainly be, I'll put it that way.
That, that it, Bob?
I think that's, I, I think on all the other items, I'm gonna be, be okay with where the majority's going.
Okay, um, Commissioner Bolton?
Uh, sure, um, I'm of the same mind as, uh, Commissioner Dells regarding the roof. I don't really like the idea of allowing it to be necessarily a staff decision at this point. I still don't really think I think any metal is gonna be appropriate in that location because of the proximity to the neighbors. I think that there isn't a metal roof that isn't gonna provide significant heat gain and some reflectivity. Um, I think the slope makes it difficult to put other materials on that roof, but I don't know what to tell you about that. This door downstairs gives me some trouble, I have overall problems with the fact that any of this work was done without a permit. Or done without, you know, coming back to the city for changes. I didn't make that statement before, just be very clear about that. I don't like this, it seems like a game, and I don't wanna play this game. And I don't think the city should play this game. I'm now leaning towards a continuation, or a motion for continuance. I think that perhaps, um, one more go-around could provide something here that everybody could agree on, because I think what we've managed to achieve at least somewhat is a clarifying of what the strongest issues are, at least to the planning commission, and where more or less we all fall. My comments regarding the location of the door now proposed, the height of the, uh, back patio now proposed, and the chimney, and the window changes, all of these changes are based on the fact that I believe I would have voted, uh, in this way had these come to me as a planning commission member in the past. Like, if this, if this had not been a staff approval, I believe I would have been okay with the patio height, I believe I would have been okay with the door location, and the windows having an awning at the bottom, and the color changes. But I really have a bad taste in my mouth because of these things being done without any sort of oversight or permission from the city. So I have no objection to costing, you know, or having a, a cost incurred to the, uh, builders and, and the, uh, project, because they made a mistake, if we wanna call it, and changed something they shouldn't have without getting permission. But I'm unclear about one thing, and I want some kind of clarification on this from Marnie, hopefully. There's a lot, there's some discussion about a prior deal with the neighbors, the Raffetos in the north, in twenty nineteen, and I, I'm just unclear about what that really means, because it's been used in various contexts regarding various issues on this project. And so if there was some in, deal in fact, wherein, for instance, the Raffetos said, yes, you can put a patio out here, it must, if you go at this height, and the project agreed to this, and that they could do the door in this location, but had to open in a certain direction, then they, they would agree to this, but I don't, I don't, I don't know anything about this, other than some mentioning of it. So is there anything you can tell me about any arrangement between the city and the neighbors and the project regarding, you know, any of these items um, that we can now sort of rely on, or refer back to, or be punitive about issues at this point because they were in fact, um, some kind of prior arrangement, will have some kind of standing? So, sorry.
No, I think the, the first thing I wanna, I wanna state is that, you know, even projects that are reviewed at a staff level are a public process. Um, and so they are still discretionary, just like the planning commission reviews are discretionary. Um, and we engage the public in discussions on the projects. Anytime a project, um, has the potential to be inconsistent with the design guidelines, we can refer that project up to the planning commission. So, for example, the window proposed on the north elevation had the potential to create a privacy impact to the Raffetos. And so what we discussed is that the project would go to planning commission, you know, with, with that window for consideration. Um, but the architect spoke with his clients, and they decided that they would be willing to eliminate the window. So the window on the north elevation was eliminated. Same discussion with the roof. If they had proposed, you know, wanted to move forward with the metal roof, we would have referred it up to planning commission. They chose to go with the wood shingle, so it stayed at a staff level. Now, the plans that the Raffetos reviewed and were comfortable with are the plans that were presented to them. Um, had they been presented with a different patio, a different window configuration, they may have expressed other concerns.
And that's, and that is the purpose of, of this, this meeting today, this public meeting. So basically, we are further in this process. I see your hand up, uh, Mr. Raffero, but I'm, I'm gonna continue with what we're, what we're doing here. So the last commissioner I wanted to pull was Commissioner Lehman. And specifically, I'm trying to pull you on the door relocation, uh, the, in the deck height.
Well, I've already said, I, I've already said regretfully that I feel like, um, if the Raffetos are, are still, I think the door is a real issue. I, I, I think, um, as I said before, um, it's a problem that they made a major change like that. It's a problem that it's been, that the installation has started, and, um, and it's a, it's, I, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a costly era, but it was an era. And, um, so I, I think it, it will be, um, it will become more of a privacy issue, um, for the Raffetos, for the neighbors, and I think it's, um, it should be as it was on the, as it was originally approved.
And how do you feel about the deck height?
I, I'm not as upset about the deck height, because I, I'm, you know, I, I understand, um, um, the issue is about safety, because they, the people didn't want the steps, and I really, um, can understand that, um. Um, so, I, 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 I could have a lot more flexibility on that. And, um, the only thing I'd like clarified a little bit further is that that mechanical equipment should get inside that, what I see as the, the basement or lower level of the house, whatever you wanna call it, into a closet, and, um, uh, and if, if that can't happen, and I don't see why not, um, then if it goes outside, it has to be specified at the southeast corner, so it's as far away from the Raffetos as is possible on that lot, really. And, so that's a clarification that I would like to see. Everything else, I'm, I'm not bothered by those little awning windows, I don't think that's a, a really big issue, um. And, um, I, and I, I appreciate that we're dealing with a four thousand square foot lot, you know, it's only forty foot wide, so, um, and I think windows should be made to open, I, I don't like windows that are, you know, where you can't get enough ventilation, um. So, um, that's about where I am.
Okay, I'm gonna amend my motion. Okay, I'm gonna amend the motion, um, with re- with regards to the roof. Roof material should be continued for another selection. Uh, and it will be continued and then reviewed by the planning commission in a future day for whatever, what they select. But we're giving the direction that we will not support wood, we will not support a copper roof. I'm gonna change my mo- my, my special condition that, uh, the door, the relocation door can stay there. Uh, I'm gonna change that to, the, the door has to go back to the, originally as approved. I heard a majority of the planning commissioners state that. And I support that too. Clarifying my condition about the heat pump, the heat pump shall be, um, located so as to provide the maximum amount of soundproofing as possible. I'm not that crazy about putting it on the south side, because the neighbor on the south side already wrote a letter.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, they did, so I think the condition, the condition should be that, uh, the applicant's, uh, it's, it's gonna be, uh, incumbent upon the applicant to provide, um, a, a, a proposal that shows, uh, soundproofing. And I know that can be done, because there was, um, we had an application quite a while back about, for the, for the, uh, Cal rep theater. They were gonna put in some heat pumps, and they had the soundproofing provided for that, so that can be done. And then the, the other thing I'm gonna change on my previous motion is that with the lights, the lights, uh, will have to move back to the original location, and that underneath the deck have to reduce to two recess lights rather than four. So that's, that's my revised motion.
Can I-
Let me, let me, let me finish with the motion, motion, yeah. And, um, we'll go ahead, okay, Commissioner Locke?
Um-
Something about the language?
Yeah, can you include on your heat pump location, providing maximum soundproofing, um, that they also include the night quiet modes to reduce the outdoor unit sound with automatic au- automation?
Isn't that, I thought that was just something that was part of that-
No, it says optional, so I'd like to have that mandatory.
Okay, so the, uh, the heat pump shall have specified that they use the night-
Night quiet modes.
Night quiet modes, okay, that'll be part of the specifications, including the sound, soundproofing. And then, I'll just repeat, my last, uh, special condition was that the, uh, this year, lights to doors should be, should be put back to their previous location, and the recess lights under the deck should be reduced to two, I think it's, right now it showed four. So, Commissioner Bolton, do you still second that, or do you have the option to?
I can still second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion as stated, uh, is there any more discussion on this?
Just, Claire, sorry, Stephanie, please.
Stephanie?
Uh, clarification on, what, what did you say regarding the roof?
The roof material should be brought back to the planning commission in a future date for approval. So basically, I'm continuing it.
Right, no, but you mentioned something about no copper, was that-
Right, right, I said the direction that's been given by the planning commission, at this time, the planning commission will not support copper and does not support wood. And I'm leaving it up to them to come back to us, whatever they wanna propose. With, you know, and with the, you know, I think you've given them direction of what's available, and I, I might look into, and, and I heard other comments from Commissioner Bolton about metal, and, um, so, you know, there's, they, they've got plenty of direction to come back with something that is other than wood or copper. And Commissioner Dells, you had your hand up?
Just to clarify, so your, 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 um, sorry, motion, um, does not ask for the patio to be removed?
My, my motion-
No.
Does not.
Does not, because I, there is a split on that. So I'm just leaving it as is.
And does your motion include, um, moving the fireplace, I believe it did.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Relocating the fireplace with the direction that the applicant shall look into reducing the chimney height additionally.
Thank you.
So, but just to clarify that, um, I, I will not support the motion, because, uh, it does, it does not- it does it does not, because in my opinion, it rewards the unapproved construction, significant construction of a patio. I'll just leave it there.
Duly noted. Okay, I'm going to call for for roll call on this motion now unless there's some compelling thing that somebody wants to to say here. Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
No.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
No.
And Commissioner LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion is carried, I believe, passes three to two. I want to thank you all the commissioners here. I think this was a really good discussion and I think it sends a message, a very strong message about doing unpermitted work. And I think that that I think that's the real message here. So and I want to thank the Ruffetos for their determination and hanging in there. And I hope they feel like the planning commission has served their deals and to Mr. Soriano, I I know you're a good builder. I mean, I've always admired your work. I know you do a great job. But I hope you feel like you've had a fair discussion here today. All right. Having said that, I'm going to call for a recess here for for 15 minutes. So we're going to reconvene at a quarter to seven. Is everybody I hope everybody's in favor of that? So we we will convene, reconvene at quarter seven. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Margie, would you like to, can you have roll call again? Reconvene the meeting?
Uh, yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bolton? Commissioner Dels?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Chair LaPage?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing with the public hearings, we have item number eight. This is a design study. It's DS 21-59. The Q project, this is consideration of a track one design study for the construction of a driveway gate located on Communal Real three northwest of Ocean Avenue in the R1 district. Can we have the staff report, please?
And Michael, I'm I'm I have to be recused on this one.
Okay, Commissioner Dels is recusing himself from this project.
Okay, thank you, Chair LaPage. See, so before you is a track one design study referral for the Q residents. The property is located on Communal Real three northeast of Ocean Avenue. This is an 8,000 square foot lot. It has a recently constructed almost 2,700 square foot two-story residence with an attached garage. Both the residence and the garage are set towards the back of the lot with the garage having a over 70 foot setback from the front property line. The applicant is proposing to install a four-foot-high driveway gate. So the proposed gate would be framed on both sides with stone columns. A matching pedestrian gate would be located next to the driveway gate. This would fully enclose the front yard. And an existing portion of the front yard fence, which runs parallel to the driveway, would be removed. The residential design guidelines encourage continuing the pattern of fences nearby within a neighborhood, maintaining a sense of openness and designing fences and gates with open and transparent qualities. You go back to this one, the proposed driveway gate is a solid wood panel. The applicant is proposing to match the design of the garage door. The pedestrian gate is also a solid wood panel to match as well. Based on the residential design guidelines and evaluation of the surrounding neighborhood, there are not existing driveway gates in the vicinity. Also, the installation of the driveway gate would really fence off the property, especially considering that it has 80 feet of frontage, which would really detract from the the openness of the yard. Staff's recommendation is that the commission deny the request for a driveway gate. As an alternative, staff is suggesting that possibly setting the gate back 20 to 24 feet from the front property line might allow for some additional filtered views into the front of the property. And just wanted to propose that for the commission's consideration. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners?
Yes.
See anybody? Okay, all right. Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. With the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address the commission at this time? I think Greg Greg Holden's here, right?
Hi, Craig Holden here. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for that presentation, Marty. Yeah, so obviously, that last project was an interesting one. There was a gate as part of that. Obviously, there were some negative sentiment events about the prospects for that gate moving forward. And we too actually have a similar reason, it sounds like. The owner of this house purchased this house very recently from the people we actually designed it for a couple of years ago. It was finished about a year ago in construction. And A D Q and his family, they have a large dog, a very rambunctious, lively dog. And they are interested in having a controlled, safe environment for the dog and the grandkids to race around in. And the driveway in particular is of interest as a control zone because it's a good place to toss a ball without tearing up the landscaping. So that's the reason that why they want the gate. But I'd like to address or target the rest of my comments to why this particular proposal should be seen as appropriate for the neighborhood and the city. Many, if not most, of the houses in Carmel have their garages pushed to the front of the property. In fact, many of these garages take advantage of the allowable exception to front yard setback requirements and crowd the front property line quite closely. And actually, this makes sense under current design guidelines as it minimizes driveway length, thereby allowing owners to use their modest site coverage allowance in creating outdoor living areas elsewhere. It's important to note, though, that by putting the garage close to the street, the garage itself becomes the most public design element of the property. And along with whatever fence accompanies it, provides the architectural moment that defines the transition from public to private. Our property is different. It situates the garage to the very rear of the property with that house also set well back from the street. In addition, a very large, very dense live oak near the front property line effectively obliterates any view of the house from the street, except from the very northern margin of the corner of the property. Unlike the majority of other properties in the city and the other properties in this immediate neighborhood and on the street, our house has virtually no presence and no sense of arrival for visitors or passersby. Our proposal, modest as it is, would help correct that lack of presence by bringing a small taste of the house's architecture forward to where it could be seen and experienced. And though a gate offers some prospect of entry. And it's worth noting, the gate is solid. We would certainly be open to making it less solid. But it is derived from both, not only the garage door on the property, but also there are, there's wood paneling associated in certain key elements within the house design itself. And so this really is derived from that. So it really is supposed to be a very subtle derivative of the house architecture that makes its presence known on the street. Whereas you're behind that tree, the house itself is really quite invisible. It's my feeling that the architectural tapestry of street presence enjoyed by the majority of houses in Carmel goes a long way to making the Carmel experience what it is for both visitors and inhabitants. Allowing this proposal allowed us to, you know, take part in that being a part of that tapestry to small, some smaller way. Finally, in regards to how many of the drive gates are already in the city, we performed a brief driving survey through a decent chunk of the heart of residential Carmel. And I have a map that I can show you if, if, if people are interested. But of the forty-eight blocks we looked at, the total number of houses with drive gates is forty-four, or slightly less than one per block. But it varies from zero to three per block. As the graphic shows, and as Marty pointed out, there are none on our block. But again, most of our block has garages that are right up close to the street. Again, as always, it's a very different circumstance. And in terms of the diversity of Carmel that is encouraged by the diet, design guidelines, it would seem appropriate to allow the gate in this particular instance. We do have about a twenty-four foot setback from the, from the right of way to the property line. It is a deep setback here in terms of that, that distance. So even though the gate is currently on the property line, it really doesn't crowd the street. It is only four feet high. I mean, there's a lot of talk about walls and privacies. Everybody I know who's over the age of fourteen is, is well over four feet tall. And so I think it's, it's, it's a little disingenuous to say there's a wall or that there's this masking. It is a two-story house. It is set to the back of the property. This low horizontal datum at, at the front of the property both announces what's behind it, but, but no way obscures that or the, or the big green belt that the, that the whole street is able to enjoy. And I, I think that will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Are there any questions for Craig regarding? The proposal? Don't see any hands going up. Okay, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the planning commission regarding this application? Don't see any hands going up. Okay, so I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Sure. So when we visited the project site earlier today, um, well, two things came up as questions. In terms of being able to provide a safe place for kids and dogs to play, there's no reason that the existing fence line that runs from east to west could not be extended all the way to the house and a gate put in, and that would make the front yard secure. So that was, that was one comment that I think that we made and, and I, at least I made during our, our site visit. And the second thing is that the proposed gate would is proposed to open inward. And the driveway is goes on an uphill slope to, you know, uphill slope to the garage. And we're trying to figure out what the mechanics would be that you would actually be able to have a gate that goes inward and would have, would not have a space at the, you know, when it's closed, that would have enough clearance to be able to actually open to allow a car to go in. So those are, those are two questions. And then my third comment on this just has to do with, this is three block, this property is three blocks to the beach. If the kids want to go throw balls, they should go down to the beach and throw balls or go out in the street and throw balls. Or, I mean, that, that should not ever, the fact that the, the driveway isn't closed shouldn't be something that would prevent people from enjoying the property.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Lehman?
Oh, well, I just, I'm in total agreement with Commissioner Locke. I don't have anything else to add. I, you know, I, there are, there's the beach, which is the greatest park of all in Carmel. And then there are parks in Carmel. There are lots of places to to the grandchildren to be, to play and be played with. And, and there is a way to extend that fence so that they can have a huge play area at, at the house without fencing in the driveway. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Dels? Your comments? I'm recused. Oh, you're recused.
That's supposed to be you.
It's getting late. Commissioner Bolden, thank you.
I don't support a fence and I agree with Commissioner Locke. And I think she has a reasonable solution to the play area. And if there were to be any kind of enclosure, it would need to be more open than anyway. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolden. You know, the only thing that we were about these gates is there isn't really anything in the design guidelines that addresses this. You know, we have, we have gates all the time and fences, you know, in the front yard. The main thing is that it says that you know, we want to, we don't want to create a walled-off enclosed. We want to have these open filtered views. So that's what the guidelines say. And, you know, in that context, if you, if I interpret this, you know, in the context of the guideline, I, I would first of all, you know, say that the, the gate is solid, so therefore it's not supported by the guidelines. It should be an open design. And then I, I think that staff suggestion that the gate be set back so that you don't have this continuous line going across the front, which creates more of a walled-off look. There's, because it's such a wide lot and you've got such a, a long section of fence there, you know, longer than most of the typical forty-foot frontages of the lots. So if there was a setback and it was an open design, you know, I, I think that the guidelines do support that. Although I don't, I don't hear a lot of support from, for the gate from my other commissioners. So those are just my comments. I don't really have any other comments on it. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
I think the resolution from the staff was to deny it.
Craig Holden is holding his hand up.
Oh, Craig, Craig, would you like to make, yeah, go ahead, make some more comments.
Thank you. So I'm curious about what the standards are for proving gates in Carmel. As you pointed out, Commissioner LaPage, there, there isn't a standard. There's no prohibition or prescription. I, I do hear you about the setback being increased. I do hear you about coming back with a more open gate. But I, I know that, that there is, there are gates that get approved. I believe there's one on Carmelo northwest of Ocean, which was recently approved within the last several months. There, there are, it, it would be nice to have some standards to, to understand what's appropriate and what's not. And again, every comment about there being available parks and beaches and so forth is quite true. But it, that doesn't necessarily change the notion of somebody being able to have their dog, being able to run around their property and, and be able to throw a ball in the, on the driveway. So again, everything that's said has been, I believe, correct. But, but again, understanding how to navigate that where there is nothing in the guidelines which directly prohibit or, or condemn this, 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 this tack would, would be helpful. Thank you.
I agree, and I'm sympathetic to your, to your position there. And I, I, that's why I framed my comments in the context of what the guidelines actually say and what I interpret the intent to be. And I think my, the, my fellow commissioners, that's what they're trying to do too. Now, everybody has a little different take on it. And I think one of the, I mean, one of the frustrations about the guidelines is they aren't a hard and fast standard. And I know that frustrates a lot of applicants. And whereas the, the municipal ordinances are pretty much a hard and fast standard. And the guidelines were deliberately written this way to be more flexible. And, but, but that does cause some problems. So having said that, I'm going to invite my fellow commissioners to expand on that a little bit if they'd like to. So who would like to jump in? Or, or would you like to jump in?
Commissioner Bolton has his hand up. And there's also somebody from the public, but I believe the public hearing is closed.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bolden. You have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, to be clear, in this particular case, I don't support a gate, partially because of the deep setback of the house. And I think the angle from the street will prevent the openness that we're seeking. And I agree that we could potentially develop an actual gate standard. But I like how this, like the ability to look at these projects on a case-by-case basis and not be, have our hands tied by dogma in this particular case. So I'm very sympathetic to the architect and the applicant. I understand their desires. I think I could potentially support a setback gate. But I feel that a gate in this particular case provides an unbroken line between the property and the street. And the very solid proposal from the gate means I can't support it at all. So my statement was simple, that I don't support the gate as submitted. And that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Do you have an opinion about staff's alternative?
Yeah, I could potentially support a setback gate, but I haven't seen that proposal, so I don't know. I don't have, in, in other words, it's not so much in particular the concept of a gate that I'm objecting to. It's once again, as you stated nicely, objecting to a violation of our design guidelines in which this particular case, a solid line of wall, fence, gate, unbroken from property line to property line would be presented to the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolden. Any other commissioners want to comment on this? Commissioner Lehman?
Yes, I, I, you know, I, I don't think we want to be contrary, Craig. But there, there is a way to fence that front yard so children can play. I, I don't think we were, we weren't trying to be cynical about the beach and the playgrounds. But there, there is a way to just continue that gate that will fence the dog in and then put a pedestrian gate up closer to the house or anywhere along that line. And like, as Commissioner Locke said, just to take that fence that's existing now and take it straight back to the house. And you'll have a great, huge area for, for a dog to run around in. And the same for any children or anyone that wants to be there. It's a gorgeous setting, those beautiful oak trees. And it's a lovely house. So I, I, I don't, I don't see why the driveway has to be included in this fencing to make people happy. You can throw a ball on, around on, on an area where there's grass. And I don't know how anyone can even have grass anymore with our water shortage. So that's it.
Do you, Commissioner Lehman, do you have any thoughts about the alternative that staff suggested?
No, I think the alternative that both Commissioner Locke and I suggested is, is a better alternative. Is just take that back and, and fence off that, that beautiful green area.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Locke, did you want to have any additional comments?
No, I, I'm not adverse to the idea of a fence or a gate that would be up close to the driveway. But as Commissioner Bolton said, we haven't seen that design, so I'm not for this particular design.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public comments again because this person's got their hand up. And just because of this format we're in, I think it's harder for people to get, say what they want. So whoever's got their hand up there, would you like to make a comment? If you're there?
Yeah, my name is Nathan May. I'm the building contractor that built the house with Craig Holden.
Okay. You've got the floor. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted, sure, thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to refer back to the comment about the mechanics of opening the gate into an uphill situation. And it, it's a pretty common occurrence. Basically, what happens is the lower hinge is elongated. So that, that gate opens in an articulating upward motion. So that part, that part of the equation is not an issue at all. But I also wanted to refer back to the guidelines referring to the gate in, or the fence along the entire property line. I just interviewed for a job on Carmelo for Northwest of Ocean. They just got approved, I believe. I have plans for it. And that project required a gate. They're adding a garage and allowing a gate. And that is going to, is a uncontin, it's a continual gate from, or a fence with a gate from property corner to property corner, which would be not unlike what we're requesting. However, that particular situation is all like kind. Whereas what Craig has drawn for this project breaks it up a little bit, allows for some architectural character. So I just wanted to throw that out there that, and, and then on, on the other side of the, of the Commune Real where we're located, there's a, there's a couple of instances where there are what Craig was just referring to as garages that were close to the setback that, that do create a, a walled-in appearance. I mean, the, the corner of Commune Real and Ocean Avenue would be a great example of that. The garage located right on the setback, a complete walled-in appearance. The fence that we built in front of Commune Real three northeast of Ocean is a beautiful fence that allows see-through appearance. We're not walled in at all. The gate was, that was being proposed matches the aesthetics of the house. So I want to throw all that out there just to reconsider what your alternatives were. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Uh, thank you for your comments. Okay, uh, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Don't see any more hands. Okay, um. And close the public comments again. Um. So we've had a pretty good discussion on this so far. I think. There's a couple of ways we could go on this. We could just have a, a motion to uh, support the resolution as per staff to. Deny it, or we could continue it and let the applicant. Uh, come back with a revised design. I don't know how you feel. I'm not gonna make, make a motion. I'm just throwing that out there. And uh. Commissioner Locke, catch your hand up.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution denying the track one design study. For the construction of the driveway, driveway gate at Communa Real three Northwest of Ocean Avenue. DS twenty-one dash one five nine Q. Um, I guess that's all I need to say on that one.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the application. Uh, is there any further discussion? Yeah, I'm a little. I'm a little conflicted on this because I think the guidelines. Aren't real clear. And I think there is an opportunity here for redesign.
Well, I think there is too, but I think that they can resubmit that. Um, I mean, it's clear right now. They don't need the guidelines because of the solid.
Okay, I, I see your, I see your point. I see how you're approaching this. Okay. All right, any more discussion? Here and none. Roll call please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Uh, Chair LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the, the motion passes. Thank you. All right. The next item and the last item on our public hearings tonight. Commissioner Dove is back. I hear something else there? Okay, okay, the next item and the last item on the public hearing tonight is a design study. This is DS two-one dash one zero nine. This is a Hays project. It's a consideration of a track one design study to replace a tile roof with a metal roof. Located at two nine nine six Franciscan Way in the single family R one zone. Bring up staff report please.
Thank you, Chair LaPage. So the Hays residence is located at two nine nine six Franciscan Way. The lot is over ten thousand square feet with uh. Over three thousand square foot two-story residence. The residence currently has a red barrel tile roof. So as we've been discussing, the residential design guidelines um. Encourage the use of wood shingles and shakes for uh, roof material. The guidelines provide some alternatives that may be considered. Um, and generally state that metal, plastic and glass is inappropriate. Um, however, the commission has the authority to approve. Materials um, that they deem appropriate. The applicant is proposing a metal roof. Uh, it is a low gloss in a dark bronze color. In evaluating this uh, roof material, staff did discuss uh, with the applicant um, possibly looking at. Other options that have more of a matte finish. Um, while this particular sample is low gloss. The context in which it would be installed um, has some potential impacts for glare. There is a lack of tree canopy in this area and a lack of shading for the roof. Additionally, um. The neighbor sits slightly above the project site and would be looking down onto the roof. And the large expanse of the roof area based on the house size could just exacerbate any potential glare impacts. Staff notes that this is not in the high fire hazard severity zone. Although we know with wildfires, they don't respect any boundaries. Um, and staff does find that it's not necessarily incompatible with the architecture. Um, but just that there are some impacts that. Are, would be difficult to mitigate. So staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt a resolution um, denying the design study for a metal roof. Uh, an alternative, the commission could provide direction to the applicant on a material. Um, that you find more acceptable, which could be a metal roof with a matte finish or uh, some other material. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for staff and commissioners?
No.
Okay, thank you, Marnie. All right, um. Is the applicant or the applicant representative here would like to address the planning commission?
Uh, good evening, it's Paul Hayes.
Okay, Mr. Hayes.
And I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission and wanna thank the commission as well as the city staff. For reviewing our application. Um, our request is to uh, transition to the metal seam roof as the staff have described. Uh, our understanding and Scudder will comment on this is that we are using a matte. Finish on the metal seam roof. Um, consistent with other metal seam roofs in our immediate neighborhood that have obviously been approved and installed. I'd also like to mention that in our partnership with. Uh, Scudder, we are committed and sensitive to environmental impact. And so um. Scudder is procured an individual so that the tiles um. Uh, could be repurposed and not end up in the landfill. And those arrangements have been made. And that the other aspect of this project includes converting the house towards solar power. Um, and uh, and there again, in sensitivity and appreciation of our environmental impact. And with that, I'll just conclude my comments and, and pivot over to Scudder, sensitive to time. Uh, for the commission this evening.
So this is Janet from Scudder Roofing, and I did wanna go ahead and follow up on that. So we are planning to go ahead and install. I noticed um, you guys were requesting a matte finish. For the manufacturer, this is considered a matte finish. We actually got approval with the city of Carmel earlier this year to go ahead and install that same color on a different roof. I would like to go ahead and share screen. So you can see what the roof color would look like installed. Um, so you guys are able to go ahead and see. Um, this is a cool roof, energy efficient. Title twenty-four, so as far as reflecting any light or anything or heat, um, just take into consideration that this is an. Energy efficient title twenty-four. I would like to share my screen, please. So this is um, one of the roofs we went ahead and we installed this year. Um, it was for the Jackson residence. And as you can see, this is. Pretty much on a sunny day. Um, and this is exact same color that we are proposing to go ahead and install. And there you go. There's additional pictures for you to view. So there is no reflective or anything of that sort. This is obviously during construction. Didn't be that like this. So as you can see, there is no. Reflection whatsoever. I've just wanted to go ahead and make that clear. And I think that is it. I'm not sure if Cameron or Raphael wanna go ahead and put their insight on this.
Janet, I had a quick question. Do you have a reflective number for this material? I know, don't they have a uh. Don't the manufacturers have a?
Scale.
Some type of a um. Standard for that. Janet still there?
It, it. It, it, this is Cameron Sodderd, who's got a roofing.
Okay, all right Cameron, thank you.
I, I, I appreciate you guys with your time, the commissioners and everything. Uh, thank you for listening to uh. What we have to say on this. Uh, your, your question was reflectivity, yes we did. With, with that uh, data sheet, we, we, we submitted that and, and with the uh, the, the planning commission. We can uh. Resubmit that information on there, so it's accurate. Uh, and, and we have uh, everything that you need with that. Was there a specific question like with, with the uh, reflectivity on there?
What is, what is the uh, rating on that? What's the rating? I didn't see it on the, on the application. Do you know what it is offhand?
I, I don't, I, I apologize. I don't have it with me right now, uh, but, but that is something that we, we could get that information to you. For the reflectivity on that. It, it does a, it's a, it's considered a cool roof, tile twenty-four. The, the reflectivity uh, that we have on there would be uh. Be on the uh, the data sheet. I, I don't have that on uh, right now.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any more comments, Cameron?
One of the things I just wanted to bring up, uh, with the standing seam, one of the, couple of the reasons that with, as a, as far as like a design consideration on there is the, the panels are. Black, uh, we, we, we wanted to fade it in. Right now with the tile roof, there's some uh. Tying it in with the, the, the pink roof with the black panels, it, it would really have a, a huge contrast. And uh, as well, you know, the, the owners wanna uh, become more energy efficient and uh, responsible with energy. And, and so this. This type of a system right here would really just. You, you know, would, would match up really good with the color of the panels. So we were looking at it, we're considering that and how that would affect uh, the look with the neighbor and the, the community as well. So um. I just hope you consider that as well as, as how these uh. Go, go really well together.
What, Cameron, what are you referring to together? I'm, I'm, I'm not following you.
So, part of the consideration of, of going with the metal roof on this is because the owners wanted to go with a, a solar system like uh. Paul was saying, Paul Hayes was saying the owner.
Oh, you're referring to the color of the existing roof. With the mixing with the solar.
So, so that's one part of it, but the other part of it is that when, when you install the solar, there's uh, penetrations that happen. Uh, with the tile roof, it's, it's a lot more difficult to uh, make a watertight. Uh, penetration because of the waviness of it. So you have a couple of things happening with putting these uh, penetrations going through the tile. Putting in this uh, upgrade and uh, energy efficient solar panels on there. Uh, it's, it's a harder system to match. And then you have, the, the panels are, are, are dark color. You know, you, you've seen solar panels around, so they're a black color. And so when you, when you have that contrast there, they just stand out like a sore thumb. Like you, you basically look out and you just see these panels on the roof and they just, it, it just really stand out. So in consideration of all those things of how we can uh. You know, make, make this home more efficient, uh. And, and get a, a, a panel, the way they clip on to these uh, the, the standing seams of metal. There's no penetrations. It basically clip on these seams that come up. It's very low profile and it's uh, it's, it's for the long term. Of, of the home and penetrations and how this roof's gonna last. It, the, the impact's gonna be a lot less on uh, the, the environment and the community. So that's a lot of the considerations that we had where we're putting this together.
Okay, thank you for explaining that to me. Uh, are there any other questions for the applicant? There's the Commissioner Locke's got a question.
So the um, sample we saw at the site today was basically a matte black. And what was shown on uh, the presentation with the share screen this evening was actually a brownish color. What color is this gonna be?
That's actually the.
This would be.
Color.
Oh, sorry, Janet, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's actually the same exact color. I don't know if maybe it's because of the light or. I'm assuming it's because of the light, but it's the same color. Um, the only difference is that the, this will be a galvoolum and what we had installed is aluminum. So it actually even looks darker. The galvoolum looks a little darker and more matte than the actual aluminum.
Okay, that, that answered your question, Commissioner Locke? Any other questions for the applicant from the commissioners? Okay, uh, thank you. Um. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to address the planning commission? I don't see any hands. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments.
Jennifer Scudder has her hand up. And Marnie also has her hand up.
Jennifer uh, Scudder has her hand up.
Hi, good evening commissioners. Thanks for um, taking the time to discuss this project with us. Um, I did want to mention that. This is a low gloss product. So the manufacturer of the metal panel that we're proposing on this roof. Um, they have different color options, of course, but they also have an entire. Um, collection of what they consider to be low gloss and low sheen metal. And we specifically did. Um, propose the low sheen or low gloss panel. Um, so that is taken into account. I did message our. Manufacturer rep to try to see if we can get that reflective rating for, for you folks. Um, I apologize that we don't have that tonight. Um, what I did find, and I see that we're having another screen share of what Mr. Hayes' roof looks like um, from the top. Which is important because of course this is a view that a neighbor could potentially see. Um, I, I find that the tile roof is actually pretty reflective, um, as it is currently. Um, and by that I, I mean it's, it's got some glare. It's, it's pretty noticeably visible. And so in, in the spirit of. Having a muted type system and just as Cameron had mentioned, really blending in those solar panels and as everyone saw with the. Dark bronze metal panel in the matte finish, low gloss. Uh, we really feel like it actually does a, a better job of what's there existing. Um, so we really did take that into account. Um, and I just wanted to mention that piece.
Okay, thank you Jennifer. All right, uh, were there any other hands up? I don't see any.
Marnie has her hand up.
Oh, Marnie does, yeah, I can see that. Okay, Marnie.
So I, I just did a quick search um, on the internet and it looks like this particular product has a solar reflected. Solar reflectance index of twenty-four, uh, which is on the lower end of the scale. Um, and then just to clarify, the sample that we looked at on site is a twenty-four gauge low gloss in a dark bronze color. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Marnie. You have a question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I have a question for Marnie. Um, Marnie, do you recall um. What Stoker Layer had showed for, um, had shown for that house? I believe it's on Lincoln. Um, uh, we, I think we all thought that that was just about the best of the metal roofs that in sheen that we had seen. It was. Just so flat. And I'd like to compare the numbers.
Yeah, so I don't have that sample in front of me. I could, I could grab it really quick. Um, I, I did speak with Scudder Roofing about um, that option. Um, and I don't know if they might be open to, to reconsidering. Um, we did hear the commission and the feedback that you gave us on that particular sample. Um, and I, while I'm sure we have approved this exact roof on other homes because it is a low gloss option. I think we've now seen that there might actually be, you know, an even superior product out there. Um, and so we've certainly been, been recommending that to applicants.
Yeah, it seems like twenty-four was around the number that we had previously. So that is very low.
It is.
It was, it was my understanding that twenty-three was the lowest. Available. In, in the, in the painted products. I think there's other types of finishes though that may be, may be different. Okay, uh, are there any other questions for the applicant or staff? Any other comments from the public? No hands up? Okay, I'm gonna close the uh, public comments, open up to the commissioners for their. Comments. Uh, Commissioner Bolton, yeah, start off.
Yeah, I um, actually don't really object to this roof. Um, I think it is uh, fairly low sheen. I would really like that one roof that we all are having our minds. Uh, for pretty much every metal roof right now, because it is definitely uh, the most flat roof we've seen. So, in a perfect world, um, there would be a number of products from a number of manufacturers that make. You know, the same incredibly flat appearance. And I think they will be coming. I don't know if they exist yet. Um, but I would like to, if possible, encourage the applicant to look at that precise roof. Because we all like it. But if that's impossible for some reason. But if that's impossible for some reason, I am fairly persuaded that uh this very low solar reflective index um will provide a fairly low sheen. And there was no objection from the neighbor that I recall from uh the north, who is pretty much the only um property adjacent that's going to be directly impacted by any kind of roof change to this property. So um I think I could support the project as is. Or would prefer it with that even lower sheen roof. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Um Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
No further comments. He covered everything. Thank you.
Okay, um Commissioner Lehman, any comments?
Well, I, you know, a, a roof is a great big expense for a home. And if we could um get that information from Marnie and um and have the owner take a look at it, they might end up even happier than the sample that they are currently wedded to. So um I, I'd like to um continue it if we could um just um to see if we can get them to not be too unhappy about waiting. And see if we can um have them like that Stoker Layer sample as well as we did. That's my comment.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Dells?
Um yeah, I'm, I wasn't part of the approval of this previous um finish that everybody else liked as much, so I, I can't really comment on it. But if the gloss factor, if you will, is at the low end of the spectrum, I think Christopher or Commissioner Bolton said it right, that I think we're over the long haul, we're better served to have multiple manufacturers with multiple products that qualify on the lower end of the spectrum. Um and I'll just, I'm, I'm prepared to trust that, that number of twenty-four as being close to what we're looking for. So I'm not, I'm personally not needing a continuation on this. It's a big roof. And it's going to look a lot different. And I'm, I, I really was out there struggling with trying to figure out how is it going to look uh without the tile roof? Because um as I'm not sure the tile roof was the right choice in nineteen ninety-two either. So it, 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 it's going to, that's all, I guess that's all I can say is it's going to look different. I think this house is isolated in an interesting way. And that I, I looked at this house years ago and uh you don't see it from Rio. The one neighbor above it sees it. You don't see it from the Mission. And you really don't see it from the main street Francisco, Franciscan, um because of it's, it's set back so, so far. So I, you know, I, I, I think it will be fine to go to the metal roof and I think once the solar panels are on it, I'm persuaded by, by the fact that the panels, I, I know they're going to be a lot easier to install on a metal roof. They're almost impossible to install on the tile roof. Um and I, I encourage that direction, so I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. Uh you know, in our overall discussions about these metal roofs, it's always about the reflectivity. I mean, that's what we always talk about. And um, you know, that seems to be the only real impact. And it was, it's been my understanding that twenty-three was like the lowest reflectivity. So this is a twenty-four. It's like right there, so. I can support this. And uh so do we have a motion on this, this application?
I'll move to approve the resolution uh that's in our packet. Um I don't have the number in front of me because it's getting light. Um do you?
It's a DS two-one one zero nine. Design study two-one one zero nine.
So I move to approve the motion that's in our package, the resolution that's in our packet, approving this metal roof.
I think the resolution in the package is for denial, so you are making a mo, a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To approve. I just, I just want to clarify that.
Yep, thank you. I moved to approve.
Okay, we have a motion uh to approve the metal roof as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, uh is there any more discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
No.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion is carried. All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes the public hearings tonight. The director's out of town. Is, is, Marnie, did you want to say anything in this portion as you're the, as you're the standing director?
Just two things really quick. Um just another reminder, we are having that joint planning commission historic resources board meeting on Monday, July nineteenth. The planning commission will reconvene at their regular meeting um on August eleventh. And lastly, uh we did complete the first round of interviews for assistant planner. It went really well. Um and we are planning to start second interviews um next week. And that's it.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment on the special meeting we're going to have, the, the way the order is going to go. Uh the historic resources board is going to convene the meeting first. They're going to go over the uh, the application that we're going to review, so we're going to have an opportunity to hear their, their comments and their motion, and then we're going to uh uh take over the meeting that time. And we'll do our review and we will uh make our motion, vote on it, and then we will uh leave the meeting and then the historic resources board will continue the rest of their meeting. So that's how it's going to go. Just kind of give you guys a heads up.
Um also, just to let you know that we'll be um calling roll for both meetings um simultaneously. So I'll call roll for the HRB and then we'll call roll for the planning commission. So both of you will be present um during, during that meeting. It'll be a little bit weird, but it'll work out.
Okay, thanks for that explanation, Marnie. Okay, everyone, I'll, we'll see you on Monday. Have a great weekend. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good job tonight.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. We got through it.
All right.
We got it done. Okay, I'll see you guys. Bye-bye.